Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 4, 2022 Town Council Meeting. Appreciate you folks being here tonight, and thank you council for being here and being promptly here. We have a rather busy agenda tonight, so we will try to keep it moving in proper order. So we will begin this evening by asking our town clerk if she will to call a roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Okay, thank you so much. And at this point in time, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Phil Matthews, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and also will have our invocation. Phil?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Let's pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, thanking you for your many blessings, the freedoms that we enjoy, Lord, and be with us as we deal with issues pertaining to our town tonight, and help us to make wise decisions for the people of Garner. I pray for our country. I pray for all of our military that's in harm's way. And Lord, just have your way. We pray for your guidance. In your name we pray. Amen. Mr. Mayor, if I could make a comment when you-
The floor is yours, Phil, so go right ahead.
Thank you. As many of everybody knows, those that are listening or watching on TV as present, we just had the wall at Hills in Garner. And as a Vietnam veteran, it meant a whole lot to me, and it was an emotional time for a lot of us. A lot of tears were shed, a lot of hugging, a lot of folks putting things behind them. It's hard to explain unless you were there, but it was good. And a lot of things were settled in people's mind. But it was a big team effort, and the numbers are somewhere between six and eight thousand. We'll probably tweak that as we get a little closer to it. But there are a lot of people behind the scene. I just wanted to mention just a couple of them, if you'll indulge me. We had about 125 motorcycles come in from Clayton escort the wall in. And the Veterans Committee, as well as the Patriot Guard riders facilitated those. Those come from Georgia, South Carolina, Maryland, Virginia, and North Carolina. Those people came in to escort that wall. The first half of them were Vietnam veterans, and those behind the truck were veterans and all others. But Mr. John Foster, a good friend of mine, he's on the Veterans Committee, he put that together, as well as all those beautiful American flags you've seen at the entrance. He owns half of them. He went and got another half, and we put the crosses out there. And it was so meaningful, as you come down that road, to see 125 American flags. That's how many we put out. No significance to the number, it's just how many we had, and we put them all out. Mr. Ray Dunlap, he lived out there. He was in parking. If you park, you run into Ray and his team. Ms. Mary Lee, she had her team. They did so much on admin, food, and so much. And all the ambassadors we had, there are some sitting up here. There was an ambassador and out here in the crowd of town, as well as the other volunteers, day and night out there. And of course, the setup team. But with everybody's efforts, it was a true team effort. There's no "I" in team. And just as a Vietnam veteran and part of this, I just wanted to thank everybody that's listening or here. We made a very big impact that'll be hard to top for a long time to come, and everybody had a part of that. And thank you very much. And as a Vietnam veteran, it means a lot. So thank you. Thank you for giving me the honor to speak about that.
Sure. Thank you, Phil. And I suspect, under council reports, there will be others who want to make some comments there. And they were nice enough, by the way, to give the mayor a nice little pale pen here that I'm wearing proudly tonight.
We might have another one for you.
Okay.
I'll make sure you get it.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, just as a reminder, if you have a cellphone with you, it's probably a good idea to just kind of mute that or put it on buzz, if you don't mind, so it doesn't disturb us in our meeting. The next order of business is something we call petitions and comments. This is the time of our meeting to receive comments from the public on items not included in the regular agenda. Citizens ideally should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting. If you've done that, I'll recognize her, and she will mention your name. The board is, the council is interested in hearing your concerns, but may not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And just as a reminder, if you're here to comment on one of our other hearings, that would be the proper time for you to be identified. But this is for general comments and petitions, and we would ask you to keep your comments to about three minutes or no more than five minutes. So Ms. Clerk, are there persons who have signed up for petitions and comments section? Okay. Is there a person, though, who maybe failed to sign in that would like to petition the council at this time? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Thank you. We'll proceed. Counsel, the next item is the adoption of the agenda. I believe you all have the agenda before you and the information there. I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Behringer. Properly motioned and seconded. All in favor of adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, the next item of business is under presentations, and we do have at least one presentation this evening. And so I'm going to recognize a gentleman that perhaps several of you, many of you, maybe all of you know, and that's Mr. Harold Garner, who has some persons he would like to present and introduce to us. Harold.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, thank you for letting us come in today. I have with me two beautiful girls, a young one and a one that's not quite my age, anyway. But anyway, I'm glad that we can get out, because it's been two years of being able to not be able to do what we normally do. So it'd probably take two years to get back on the full schedule. But at this time, I'm actually, well, semi-retired this year. After 52 years at the helm, I think it's time to turn it over to somebody else. So I'm gonna be basically doing the fun part, getting rid of the paperwork, working with the girls, getting their appearances, visiting, and doing things like that. So that's what I'm gonna be doing. So I'm gonna have a little time and fun with it. But at this time, I'd like to introduce Garner's outstanding teen, Reagan Sutton. Reagan?
Good evening, Ms. Sutton. We're pleased to hear from you.
Yes, thank you for having me, and I'm so excited to meet you all. When I was crowned in November, my main focus was to promote the importance of this organization and how it has impacted my life. I also wanted to promote my social impact initiative, Be Someone's Hero, which raises awareness for the importance of organ donation and being a registered organ donor. I want to go into local high school driver's aid classes and teach them how they can make an impact by registering to become an organ donor. I cannot wait to represent Garner at Miss North Carolina's Outstanding Teen in June, and thank you again for having me. I will be introducing Ms. Garner, Alexis Pribila.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming tonight. And our Ms. Garner, it's good to see you. She was out at the wall. I know, I saw her. And maybe, Ms. Teen, did I miss you out there?
No, I was not.
Okay. All right, thanks for that.
It's so good to see you all again, or again that I've met so far. I was crowned in November, and Garner has always had a huge place in my heart. It's actually the first place we have a mentoring program, which is the Carolina Princess Program, and I started in Garner. That's how, you know, gosh, 16 years ago, I was a little girl looking up to the me, which is kind of incredible, just to look back on. I do have a couple notes. So my social impact initiative is Twice the Heart, and that is based on its techniques for women incorporating cardiac education. So something that's super important to me, I was diagnosed with a cardiac arrhythmia at 12 years old. I learned about education, health, fitness, wellness, and it really made me the woman that I am today, because those are all huge parts of my life. And I guess the biggest thing for me is being able to share that education and the importance of it. You know, we don't focus as much on our heart as we should. And there's small things that we can incorporate every day that we don't think about, you know, taking a walk, exercising, even your diet, you know, eating in moderation rather than splurging on the not-so-healthy things. So I love the opportunity to get into schools, to talk to kids about, kindergarteners know the difference between a candy bar and an apple. And as adults, we know the difference between, you know, taking a walk or laying on the couch. Those things really make an impact on our life, as simple as they seem. So I'm just really excited to get into the community. I also would really love to organize a 5K in order to promote, you know, cardiac education, specifically for women, which we don't talk about as much. My mom's a cardiac nurse, which is kind of how I got so involved. And I have some incredible invasive cardiologists that are women that are going to come and speak, and I'm working on organizing that right now. So I would love to see, you know, any and all of you there. And I also have some pins that are for Go Red for Women that I would love to give all the women here tonight. So thank you for having me.
Just a quick question, if I might. So you will be competing in the Miss North Carolina Pageant. When is that?
That is the week of June 20 through the 25th, I believe. Yes, the last week.
And that usually takes place at the same place, is that right?
It's in High Point this year. So we recently moved that last year, but Reagan and I will both be competing, and we're super excited to represent Garner.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and we look forward to you representing us. And I know this town has some reputation for sending people on who get selected for Miss North Carolina, so we certainly wish you the best and wish you well. In regards to your admonition, I guess I'm gonna have to get rid of my Snickers up here, but I know-
In moderation. In moderation. Trust me, I tell that to my mom all the time. I'm a moderate. I love to work out, but I love a candy bar.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I'll see if any council members want to make a comment, a quick comment of any kind. I'll start with Singleton.
Thank you for coming and telling us about your platform, and I look forward to your success in the Miss North Carolina Pageant coming up.
Thank you all for having us.
Okay. All right.
Yes, well, definitely want to give you, wish you a whole lot of luck and bring the crown back. Don't want to put the pressure on you, though.
No pressure. Full try. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So let's see, are there any other presentations that I'm not aware of that is going to happen at this time? Oh, okay. Our police chief, if you will come forward. Yes, I should have noted that. Good to see you, chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I wanted to call up Christabel Rogers and her husband Dwight, and members of her family who would like to accompany her. We are here to recognize Ms. Christabel for, tonight, for her 32 years of service as a school crossing guard for the Garner Police Department. I think Mr. Dwight wants to speak first, if that's okay?
Good evening, Mr. Rogers. I have known him for a while. It's good to see you again, sir.
All right. How's everybody tonight?
Yeah, we're good. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to say a few things about my dear love here. She's been through a very challenging time in the last two and a half years, up until this past June. She's been hospitalized 24 times. She's had four heart attacks and a stroke. So it has taken mean from a lot of things that I normally do with the town. So I just want to mention to, mention that I get so emotional when it comes to her, but she's been with the Garner Police Department, well, 32 years, but she was going into her 33rd year when she became ill. But at the same time, I just, I'm so humble tonight, just to be here with her and my children, and I would like for y'all to stand, and my grandchildren at this time, so they can be recognized also.
Sure, yeah. Let's give them a little round of applause.
And I would like to mention that this May will be 50 years that we have been married. And I'm so grateful and humble to be part of her life. And I would like to leave with a little briefing that I would like to state to her. The trees may kiss the breeze on high. The flowers may kiss the butterfly. The sparkling wine may kiss the glass. And you, my love, have a lot of class. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Let me just mention what's fresh on my mind, if you don't mind interrupt. You heard the poetic presentation by Mr. Rogers there. If, I'm sure many of you've heard the "I Have a Dream" speech that Dr. Martin Luther King gave many years ago, but this gentleman here, if you could close your eyes and just hear him, you'd think it's Dr. King in the room with you. He learned that speech many years ago. He's quoted it many times. He usually
quotes it at the MLK meeting, and so I just wanted to recognize that. So I wasn't too surprised that he came out with some poetic rendering there. Good to see you, Ms. Rogers. Now, go right ahead, Chief Smith.
I just wanted to speak a little bit and let everyone know about Ms. Christabel Rogers. She was born in Ahoske, North Carolina, and grew up in that area until she attended Kitchell College in Henderson, and that's where she met her husband Dwight. Both Christabel and Dwight went on to attend St. Augustine's College in Raleigh, and that is when the two of them began their family, and since then have raised four children, as she previously mentioned. Christabel worked at several retail stores in Garner after college and became a school crossing guard for the town of Garner. It says in the late 1980s, but I think it was 89. So for more than 30 years, 32 to be exact, she was able to build trust and respect of the thousands of students and families whom she served during her career. She is well-known and respected by the police officers, the school teachers, the school administrators, and a lot of folks within the Garner community, in which she has interacted with for so many years. Christabel, you're missed. I miss you. I miss seeing you every day when I would come into work, and you're going to continue to be missed, more than you'll ever know. Your legacy is going to live on for many years to come, and you've made a lasting impact on us at the police department and members of the community. So just to add to this, I've known Christabel pretty much most of my life. Garner girl, Keisha and I went to high school together. We played softball together, and Christabel and I worked together, not only at the police department, but at some other places over the years. So she's just a remarkable person, and it's an honor to be able to stand here tonight and recognize you. So, in your honor, we would like to present you with this plaque for your 32 years of service with the Garner Police Department. And it says, "In grateful recognition of your service and dedication to the Garner Police Department and the citizens of the town of Garner." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lakeisha Highsmith. I am her second daughter. My oldest wasn't be able to be here, so I have to take place of being the oldest. So after, just to give a little back, she always wanted to be an educator, coming up. And growing up, that's all she talked about, was helping kids, working in the community. So she taught us very well. Well, I went to school for something else, but I've been in education for 15 years, and I work for special education kids. So I take that very, I don't take it very lightly when I say that she is a wonderful mom. She's a wonderful lady, and I hope, when I grow up, I want to be just like her. With me saying that, I would like to thank the police department for, it's been an honor to just being a part of such a wonderful team. As a mother of four children, I always loved and admired helping children. After having my last child in 1987, I decided I wanted to become more involved in my community. What better way to accomplish being a mother, helping my community, and working with children, is to join the Garner Police Department as a crossing and school guard. Since time passed, children I've crossed have become parents themselves, and I am elated every time I see a student, parent, or someone from the police department. It's been God's blessing for me to serve our community with all of 32 years. God continues to bless me each day to see how we adapted to new changes in this community. This is a tremendous blessing for me to be a part of two families, the one my husband and I created, and then the police department. Thank you again for allowing me to be a part of this unique family. Thank you, and God bless.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Chief Smith, and thank you, Ms. Christabel. I must say that every morning when I come to the mayor's office, I, there's always a crossing guard there on Avisboro Road at the Avisboro Road School, and I'm reminded of the important role as those small kids, most of them, many of them are small kids, is they stop the traffic and allow those kids to cross safely. That's a, that's a job that perhaps many of us take for granted, but it's a very important one, and we thank you for your service over the years. You have a, you have a strong record there, and we wish you well moving forward. I know, talking with your good husband, I'm aware of some of your medical challenges, and I hope in the coming days, things will continue to improve for you, for sure. Okay? Again, I'll give council members a chance to offer any comments they'd like. I'll start with Mr. Elmo Vance down here on this end.
Yes, Ms. Rogers, I want to say thank you for your service for 32 years here in Garner, and to echo what the mayor has said, the position that you held for that many years is one of great honor and also respect. And I know that you have a bright future ahead of you as you move forward in life. And I know Dwight, and I know Dwight will take care of you as well, as long as a loving family. Wish you the best.
Bellinger, anything?
Everything Mr. Vance said, and your family should be very proud, and thank you for your many years of very important service to Garner and its children.
Ms. Behringer?
Echo what has already been said. It's just amazing that you have done what you have with both the children in Garner, the families, and with your own family. And as a little aside for knowing Mr. Rogers, I was a young girl when Martin Luther King made that speech, and I remember hearing that. And every time I hear Dwight repeat that speech, I live it all over again. It's amazing what it can do for you, and amazing how well he does it. So thank you both for all your contributions to Garner and the people who live here.
And Mr. Singleton?
Yes, I think, Ms. Rogers, you spent a lot of your time as a school guard on Avisboro, right, Avisboro School. You went around some, but you did some on Avisboro Road. Yeah, yeah. I can remember seeing you there many times over the years, and the safety net that you offer the kids, because you're out there, and people on Avisboro stop along, we've had some issues on some other roads, but the people on Avisboro Road stop for the kids, stop for this crossing guard, and your many years of service are greatly appreciated. And I know your husband will, too. I see him quite often. I always think of Mr. Rogers as the muscle man, because we had the issue about the 540, and the muscles in the stream, and he got up on TV real big and said, "I'll show you some real muscles." And I'll never forget that. And he was right. But thank you for your many years of service, and I hope your health will continue to improve, and you can enjoy the time with your children and grandchildren.
And Mr. Matthews?
It's hard to capitalize on what's been said, but I do trustfully and pray that your health will continue, and all those young kids and grandkids are going to help take care of you. I know Mr. Rogers is, and where he was going with that poem, I'm not quite sure, but you're good. So, Ms. Rogers, you got to look after him. So your mission is not quite complete. So congratulations again.
Okay, thank you so much. Was there a final? Okay. One last round of applause for them. Okay, as they are departing, we will proceed with our agenda, and the next item is the consent agenda. There are several items on there for, I believe. So, council, what is your pleasure to approve the consent agenda?
The move.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. All in favor approving the consent agenda, please vote aye. Aye. If there's any opposition, and there is none. Okay, thank you so much. All right, we're going to move right into our public hearing segment of our agenda. The first item will be presented by our assisted town manager, Ms. Jody Miller, having to do with our budget. It's budget time, and so everybody's busy working on that these days. Thank you again, chief, for being here. See ya. So, Ms. Miller, I recognize you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight starts the process of receiving comments and feedback on the town's fiscal year '22-'23 budget process. Tonight's public hearing is one of two scheduled hearings during this process. Before the public hearing is opened, I wanted to provide the council and the public with a brief overview of the budget process schedule. As you- As you can see, we started our process in February of this year. At our last meeting on March 29th, we had our financial strategies update with Davenport and with our finance director, David Beck. Our first public hearing, which is tonight on April 4th, the recommended budget, excuse me, will be presented on May 2nd. Council's budget work session is scheduled for May 12th. The second public hearing, as I mentioned, there are two public hearings for the budget will be on May 17th, with our targeted date of June 6th for a budget adoption. In addition to the two public hearings I've mentioned, we also have an online form where residents can submit ideas and feedbacks for next year's budget. This form can be located on tonight's agenda. It's also under legal notices, news, and finance pages on the website. And if you'll give, oop. A moment, I will show you just quickly what this looks like. And as you can see, this is an online submission form. It's very easy to fill out. We just ask that residents put their names, their addresses, and then at the very bottom, we ask for email addresses as well, and then at the very bottom, we give them an open box where they can provide the town any of their ideas and comments for the budget process. This budget process will be open until May 20th, and we will provide updates and compile the information for council's review as part of this process. So thank you for the opportunity to share the schedule with you tonight for the budget process, and with that, Mayor, I'll let you open the public hearing.
Yes, okay, thank you so much, Ms. Miller, and I will open the public hearing at this time. You've heard the presentation. I'll begin to see if council just has a quick question or two for Ms. Miller. We'll have lots of opportunities to talk with town staff further about the budget, but I want to also see if there's anyone in the audience who is here to offer comments. But, council, anything for Ms. Miller at this time? Okay. Yeah, go right ahead.
Comments that come in from the public, how will they be collated and compiled for staff and then for council?
So we'll just take the information as it's submitted and compile it into one sort of longer list of comments that has all the information that's on the form, and we'll provide it to council for your review and considerations.
Okay, anything else from council at this time?
Uh, we, one, since the recommended budget will be presented on May 2nd, is that when we will get the budget, or will we get it before then?
You'll actually receive it the Friday before, so April 29th, a copy will be delivered to your home. May 2nd is the actual meeting date where the budget will be presented to the council.
Great weekend reading.
Okay. Yet to be determined.
Our town is growing, so our budget process certainly has grown sure enough. Okay, thank you so much, and at this time, those of you who are here, here the process that you may prefer to use, you can go online and fill out the form and make your comments, and there'll be further opportunities. But is there anyone here this evening who came for the express purpose of offering up any comments or recommendations on the budget? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we will move along. I start to say I'll close the public hearing, but I guess technically, does it remain open, I guess, for the duration of the comment period?
Right, since the comment period is remaining open through the second public hearing, there's no need to close this particular one.
Okay. All right. The second item under public hearings is an annexation petition, and Mr. David Banford, I believe, from the planning department, will make a presentation. Mr. Banford.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. We've got two annexations, public hearings for you tonight. First case, case number is Annexation 22-05, and this is a vicinity map of the site. This is a single-family house. It's located at 1206 Buffalo Road. It's just over an acre in size, and the property owner approached us and requested connection to public water. The earnings are 20, and per the Raleigh-Garner merger annexation agreement, extension of utilities does require a voluntary annexation petition, and so that was filed, and the first meeting we had was on March the 7th, to set the public hearing. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. And again, this is related to water, water connection only.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Banford. Council members, your opportunity to ask questions for Mr. Banford. Anybody? Start down here. Nobody?
No questions.
Okay, let's see, are you presenting the next item as well? So we need to stop at this point in time and have a vote on this particular item, so, council, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, can you just confirm that there's no one here to make public comment and close the public hearing?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, anyone here who desires to comment on this particular issue? Okay. Hearing none, now I guess a motion is in order, is that right?
Mayor, move your approval ordinance 2022-5105.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none. Council, if you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. Okay, thank you. It is approved. Mr. Banford, next item?
The case number for this next item is Annexation 22-06, and this is a request for both public water and public sewer. And this is for a large development. This was originally approved as Oak Park West. It was renamed to Magnolia Park. This is off of New Bethel Church Road, across the street from Sutton Springs, and also directly west of Oak Park subdivision. Site is about 193 acres in size. It's zoned, the PRD, Conditional District 8, and there were 400 single-family homes approved, as well as 180 townhomes. And this was approved back on August the 20th, 2019. And so they've moved forward and are ready to start construction on the homes. They have been doing a lot of site clearing over the last year, and so they're moving forward to record plats, and so they have filed annexation to connect the water and sewer. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Banford, and I guess I wasn't formal enough to open the public hearing, but it opened as you started your presentation, so the hearing is open. Council members, questions for Mr. Banford on this issue? I'll start to my left with Mr. Matthews, anything?
None.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this way, Ms. Behringer, Mr. Bellinger, okay, all right. Anyone here in the audience who came to speak on this matter? Okay, hearing and seeing none. I'm going to close this public hearing formally and ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the ordinance 2022-5106.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance, so motions properly before us. Any other question before we vote? Hearing none, if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no, and it is so ordered. Okay, Mr. Banford, you're on the roll, so we'll let you keep going, sir. I'm going to open the next public hearing, and Mr. Banford will introduce the item.
Mayor and members of council, this is a conditional zoning request with a master Site is on Wilmington Road, which is located off of Jones Sausage Road, up near the Jones Sausage I-40 interchange. The site is approximately 11.32 acres in size, and this is a Tier 2 Conditional zoning request. There are written conditions, and there's also a master sketch plan attached as well. And to summarize the request, this is to conditionally rezone 11.32 acres from Heavy Industrial 2 to Multi-Family Conditional District 250 for the development of residential dwelling units at a density of no more than seven and a half units per acre. So this, there are some use restrictions proposed, and there's also some architectural conditions proposed as well. The site is located here on this map outlined in orange. It has frontage along Wilmington Road. It backs up to Hunter's Mark subdivision. Hunter's Mark is a single-family subdivision. On the west side of Wilmington Road, we have single-family homes on large tracts of land. And as you move towards the intersection with Jones Sausage Road, the use is transitioned to industrial office warehouse flex space uses. This map shows the current zoning in this area of Garner. The site is zoned Industrial 2, which is our highest commercial zoning district. Hunter's Mark is zoned MR1, which is Multi-Residential 1. It was an obsolete district under the Unified Development Ordinance that was approved in To the west, we have R-40 zoning, which is a, which is a low-density agricultural zone. To the south, towards Jones Sausage Road, we have Service Business, which is the red, red zone here. That is a heavy commercial zone, and the I-2, the gray color, that is industrial zoning. And move towards, up towards the northeast, towards I-40, you'd have some more commercial zoning, some community retail zoning, and also some service business zoning. This is a conditional request, and the applicant has proposed to limit the range of multi-family uses to only the following two, townhomes and condominiums. And I'll run through the proposed conditions. Townhome units will be combined in four, five, and six-unit buildings. The front facade of each group of attached townhouses will be a combination of stone, board, battened siding, horizontal siding, shakes and or shingles, and 10-inch minimum eve overhangs. Vinyl will not be allowed. Townhouse units will be combined in four, five, and six-unit buildings. The front facade, I think that's a repeat of the previous slide. Staff advise the applicant that breaking up offered condition number two, as follows, might make their request more favorable to the town council. Two, individual townhouse buildings shall include a mix of four, five, and six-unit buildings. Three, the front facade of each building shall be sited with a mix of stone, board, and battened horizontal siding in shakes or shingles. No vinyl siding shall be allowed. All rakes and eaves shall have a minimum overhang of 10 inches. Moving on to the other proposed conditions, number three, maximum density shall be no greater than seven and a half units per acre. Four, all units shall contain a minimum of 1,250 heated gross floor area with a minimum of a one-car garage. Five, any outdoor community gathering spaces to be 250-square-foot areas with amenities such as park benches, sidewalks, and landscaping. All garage doors will include decorative carriage hardware. Seven, garages will be 12 by 20 minimum, which includes areas for hot water heater and trash recycling cans. Eight, a group of townhouses shall have no more than two units without a horizontal offset of at least two feet. Nine, there will be no side wall without a side door or window. Ten, all townhouse front entries shall be covered. Let's see. Eight, a group of townhouses shall have no more than two units without a horizontal offset of at least two feet. Staff advise the applicant that amending condition eight, as follows, might make their request more favorable to the town council. All garage doors will include decorative carriage hardware and windows. Ten, all townhouse front entries shall be covered. Staff advise the applicant that amending condition number 10, as follows, might make their request more favorable. A group of townhouses shall have no more than two units without a horizontal offset of at least two feet in both the front and rear facades. Next, we will go on to the master plan. Area again is 11.32 acres. There's 121 units allowed under the MF1 rules, and the master plan has a 75-unit cap per the conditions. The minimum width for a townhome unit is 18 feet, and the setbacks are 25 feet in the front, 15 on the side, 30 feet between buildings are triangulation method, and a rear setback at 25 and a corner side of 25. This is the proposed master plan here. The perimeter buffers are shaded in green. There is open space proposed in this area. There will be passive common area around the cemetery. The cemetery is not part of the project site, and it will be preserved and maintained. The cemetery is still active, so the plan does provide protection of the cemetery. Lastly, the stormwater, proposed stormwater area would be located here. Planning Commission summary, these were some of the topics the Planning Commission discussed. They talked about whether or not a traffic study should be done, and for a project this size, a traffic study would not be required. The town, however, will coordinate with NC DOT to require a signal timing analysis as part of an encroachment permit. There was some concern with more traffic on Calabar Street with the Wilmington Road realignment. There were questions about water and sewer connections around the area and to adjoining properties. The status of the cemetery was discussed. Also discussed was the future extension of Wilmington Road. Regarding public comments, the comments were in favor of the request, and the public noted that a residential use is preferable over heavy commercial or industrial that would be permissible in the existing zoning district. Planning Commission did vote unanimously to adopt the following consistency statement and recommend approval to the town council. And I'll read the consistency statement. While this request to rezone 11.32 acres from Heavy Industrial 2 to Multi-Family Conditional District 250 for the development of residential dwelling units at a density of no more than seven and a half units per acre is consistent with some of Garner's land use-related plans, it is inconsistent with the is consistent with some of Garner's land use-related plans, it is inconsistent with the future land use map designation of Light Industrial Center, which calls for light industrial uses and flex space uses. Therefore, a land use map amendment would be approved to redesignate the site from Light Industrial Center to High Density Residential, which would allow for residential units at a density of not less than five units per acre. Regarding reasonableness, in addition to approving a statement regarding plan consistency upon the advice of the Planning Commission, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. There's some, some staff observations. These are things staff would like to point out to the council that you may wish to discuss as part of your deliberation for reasonableness. Number one, townhomes would be less intense than uses allowed in the Industrial II zone and provide a more gradual transition between single-family homes at Hunter's Mark with any potential commercial or other intense uses on the west side of Wilmington Road and also down towards Jones Sausage Road. Two, the proposed district in use would provide more housing within future walking distance of existing and emerging employment centers. And also for consideration is the value and scarcity of industrially-zoned land. Staff recommendation, despite the identified inconsistency, staff supports the request reflected in Section 3 of this report and recommends to the town council approval of the Planning Commission's statement of consistency as amended in Section 6 of this report and further recommends approval of the zoning amendment CZ MP 21-08 request as a reasonable one. And more information is in your worksheet in the staff report. So I'll stop there. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And the applicant is here as well and also has a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bamford. Okay, council, your opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Bamford. I'll start with Mr. Vance on my right.
I have no questions.
Okay. Your, Tellinger?
You mentioned it's a Tier Two and it's a conceptual drawing. Just one question about the open space. And where is the dedicated open space? Is it all around the cemetery? Is that the only dedicated open space? I know there's other buffer area on the back end.
I'll let Jeff answer that question. So in reference to, to what they have dedicated, what occurs naturally in the Neuse River buffer and their perimeter buffers would qualify at that 10% more than likely. So whatever they're providing around the cemetery is actually in excess of that 10%. There are dimensional requirements to it. So it's possible that maybe at the end of the day, some of that area on the west may not qualify. But as far as meeting the 10% minimum, they should be fine. And kind of further define that area as it goes forward, but they will need to do some improvements there for it to qualify if it has to qualify.
Coming up more and more often about, and Mr. Singleton makes the point about open space for kids to play. And I started driving around when I'm in Garner and looking at townhome developments and single-family. And if your parents say, "Go outside to play," and your yard's this big, where are you going to go? And looking at the way this is laid out, I know it's still conceptual, but I think having more contiguous extra open space just might be better. Shifting it maybe to, more to one side of the cemetery than have it kind of carved out just might provide another place to play that's large enough for people to go and sit or do whatever. Just a thought.
Just for, just for scale reference, the, the area to the east is probably a good 50 by 100 for some open area. And there's probably a good 50 by 50 pocket on the east side there, or on the west, sorry.
Oh, so that's about as wide as this room, maybe 50? Okay, that helps. All right, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, may I? I have one question.
Okay.
In reference to, in reference to Hunter's Mark, that development was rezoned from industrial to multifamily residential? Is that correct?
That is correct. Hunter's Mark was originally zoned industrial II. If that's what you're asking, it was rezoned to multi-residential I. I believe that is in your staff report and the table of the zoning history.
Thank you.
So that was Mayor. I can come back to you if we need to. Ms. Beringer?
Question. Will there be fencing around the cemetery?
I don't have that information. I can let the applicant, I believe there is some type of a landscaping hedge screen proposed, but I'll let the applicant give more information on that.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, there's not, Patty, I don't know if you know, if you've talked about a fence possibility. There is, the UDO requires, though, a fairly narrow but very dense vegetative buffer to a minimum height of six feet. So it would have to be opaque. And then I think they would have the option to add a fence if they felt that was...
Mr. Shinglin?
Noted in the conditions about the facades and the siding, horizontal siding, shakes or shingles, and no vinyl siding. Was there ever discussed about more of the masonry siding product, the Hardy plank type product, which is a longer-lasting, better product? Has that ever talked about?
Which condition was that, number two?
That inside and harbor is not a shakes or shingles, intending to say vinyl will not be allowed, but it didn't say will only be a masonry surface or product. That's what I was asking.
It would, it would allow for a mix of the, of stone as well as hardy in different patterns.
Okay. And I will, Mr. Dellinger, meet me to the point about the open space. 50 by 100 is not bad. So I showed you the pictures of the site that's right across from my office where a townhome development, which had 200 townhomes, this is 75, doesn't have any space for kids to play. And this is, this is some space, but it's still very limited, especially with the trees. The street, the trees that are showing on the landscape plan surrounding the cemetery and then, of course, hard to play ball with trees, but anyway. It doesn't have the space that I had, had mentioned to y'all before. That's all for now.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Matthews?
Nothing. It's time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any follow-up? Mr. Dellinger?
It is relevant to the, the next one, but I know there was some conversation around the facing of the townhomes. I know this is, again, conceptual at this point. Will this come back to us as a site plan at some point? So it will?
This would be a staff-level subdivision plan.
So I guess the concern or the thought is, and it kind of goes to other developments that are going to happen around town, is what direction these townhomes are facing? Whether they're facing the road or whether they're facing into the subdivision and you're looking at the back of a house? What that presentation is from the road? They're just very contrasting design styles and also have to do with what type of townhome you're building. Is there a stated preference at this point or is it just?
I'll invite Patty up just to clarify. I do know for sure right offhand that these up in this area on the northern end will actually face Wilmington Road because they're alley-loaded. I'm not as sure about the ones to the south.
All the, all the townhomes will be facing a public right away.
I know, but could you give us your name and address?
I'm sorry, Patty Hilburn with McKimmon Creed Engineers, 1703 Varsity Drive, Raleigh.
Thank you.
So these then would likely face the internal street, but they've got a bigger backyard. But these here?
Those are the only ones that will face Wilmington. That's correct.
And then this patch here would face the internal street.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. The only other comment is, I'd heard mentioned that at times the traffic up in Jones Sausage is so challenging that we have police officers directing traffic. Is that true?
I've been by there on my way home and usually it's at the light. That's the main entrance for, right in front of the employee entrance area, right in the middle of the site. I don't know that I've seen them myself as much up at Calabar, but definitely at the main employee entrance.
I've seen it. There might be part of an off-duty program.
I've seen them at Calabar, especially when they come in at 6:00, 6:30 shift change. The officer operates the light, stop light. They change the stop light because there's so much traffic out there. Really, I mean, I'll go that way on purpose just to see what it's like. I do it almost every night coming back here from eastern North Carolina. Unless it's, unless it's 5 o'clock, I wouldn't dare do that at 5:30. But at 6:30 or so, I'm serious, there'll be an officer at the Calabar with the box open and they'll control the light. So, because there's, the queue and the turn left in there is not long enough. It backs out into one of the lanes.
This is without warehouses across the street being online? So I mean, this is, there's going to be more and more?
Correct. And again, this was at the shift change, 6:30 is naming. I'm thinking of maybe 7, maybe 6:15 somewhere in that neighborhood is when I saw it. Not every night, but some nights.
We talked about our small area plans. I think the traffic in that area and the uses up there is something we'll have to keep an eye on because that's only going to get compounded when those other trucks start coming in from the new warehouse base. So it's not bad already. We've got to keep an eye on that for sure.
Okay. Let's see. Did I recognize all council members? Maybe not here, Mr.?
I do, yeah.
Okay, all right. So I believe the applicant is here and wishes to give testimony. Is that right? Okay, be happy to hear.
They do have a presentation.
Excuse me, yeah. Welcome, sir.
Evening, Mayor. Members of council, Toby Coleman, 150 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, North Carolina, here on behalf of the applicant. We do have a brief presentation. I'll just go ahead and hit on a couple of items. I think our main point, if you go to the next slide, David. I think our main point is really something that Council Vance touched on, which is that this is an area zoned I-2 currently that's sort of in an island, surrounded by residential right now. And that's really a result of, this, this entire area used to be zoned for industrial. And over the last couple decades, council has progressively rezoned this area for residential. If you go to the next slide, David. Here's just sort of a graphic history of the, of the downzoning in the area. And so the, the site's in yellow. And then what you have is Hunter's Mark being downzoned from I-2 to MR1 back in 1997. The area around Calabar Street, sort of the entry to Hunter's Mark, being rezoned to SB in 98. And then there's an area about, about four acres south of the site that was rezoned to R-15 about, I guess, eight years ago now. And so as a result of that, you know, this is a, this is sort of a unique infill opportunity where because of some of the traffic issues related to industrial use, because this is sort of in an island, this is an appropriate downzoning. One of the major issues, if you go to the next slide, David, we've got, so here's the plan. So obviously, Council Dellinger mentioned sort of the small area plans. This is the northeast gateway plan. It shows a lot of the industrial development that's going to happen. This was pre-Amazon, so it doesn't show Amazon, but it shows a lot of what's going to happen in this area, at least on the, on the southern portion of this plan. It does not include this area as part of the plan for industrial. And we think that's because sort of everybody started recognizing that this is probably an area that, that may not be ideal for, for heavy industrial. If you go to the next slide, David. Here is, you know, here are the design commitments that have been made in terms of the plan. Again, the, right now, the master plan does call for passive uses around the cemetery. I think in part, the idea there was is that you might not want a, sort of a playground or recreational area right next to a cemetery. But, and, and in terms of buffering, as has been noted, what we've done is provide, the plan currently does not specifically provide for a fence. It has, there is a UDO requirement for, for landscaping that's pretty dense. If you go to the next slide, David. And so, you know, really, you know, this is the effect of this rezoning, in addition to building, allowing townhomes. What it, also what it does is it eliminates a lot of potentially negative uses. This is something that you all saw a couple months ago when we were here for the public hearing. And I think, you know, one of the things we heard from the council and from Planning Commission was that most folks felt like it was, this is something where probably the heavy industrial is not appropriate at this site. I know that there are some council members, I know Council Singleton, you had indicated that you weren't sure about the density that should go here. But we would, we would note that given the, the options here, that this is a, a sort of a unique situation. You're not upzoning, you're not increasing the density, you're actually downzoning here. Happy to take any questions. We do have the design team here. You've already heard from Patty once. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Can we go back a couple of slides? Right there. So we were told earlier that the dozen or so units there in the bottom left-hand corner were facing out toward Wilmington Road. But this shows the driveway, the access from the back. So the fronts can be facing out, but they're going to access the units from the back. Is that what we're talking, showing here?
That's correct. So that is an, so that little U that comes down where those driveways are, is alley-loaded. So a lot of the, a lot of the other units are going to be front-loaded. Those units that have that sort of narrower street access, that is an alleyway as opposed to the rest of the site, will have public road access. So all those other roads, other than that sort of little alley there, are going to be built to public road standards and be dedicated as public roads, as is required by the UDO if you're going to do fee simple townhomes.
Matthew, I recognize you. Okay. Ms. Beringer? Anything? Mr. Dellinger? Mr. Vance?
In reference to the public meetings that you had, there were, I read, there were several questions about the issues of storm waters from the residents. And in reference to storm water, does that resolve any concerns that may, the residents may have had? And I think it was Hunter's Mark area.
Patty, is that something you can answer?
Yeah, good question.
Okay. I'm going to hand this over to Patty because she's got the expertise here.
I don't know about expertise, but here I am. I will say, I believe you're talking about the neighborhood meetings?
Yes.
That there were some, some adjacent property owners' concerns about additional storm water, you know, running and degrading the, the stream there. And I believe some on the north, there's no north arrow on that map, but slide to the north is, I mean, to the left is north. So under the requirements of the town, we are required to capture all the runoff that flows from all the impervious. All these areas will be captured and directed over to what you see as the stormwater pond or a device. We're showing a pond at this time for conceptual. And that pond will release the runoff at a pre-development rate equal to or less to the pre-development rate. So we do not, we are not impacting that stream in a negative way.
Question? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Do you wish to present any other persons at this point? Or I'll ask council if they want to? Or I'll ask council if they want to hear from others.
No, Your Honor, at this point, we don't have anything else.
Okay.
Available for questions.
Okay. Counsel, any, any other concerns? I'll get to other persons who may be here for comment. Are there any? Okay, are we good?
Good evening. I'm Yvonne Coleman, representing my mother, Margaret Coleman, and family. We own twenty-two, over twenty-two acres across the road from this project, and also Mr. Wallace Bass is here, he owns about seventeen acres across from this project. Just want to remind the council that north of our property is also residential. And so, this whole end of Wilmington Road and the future part of Wilmington Road is indeed moving in the direction of residential and absolutely not industrial. We are supporting this project. We have sat with them and looked at the need for easement in order to improve Wilmington Road, and this project will help us fulfill what we want it to do as a family, because it will bring sewage, we have water down there, but no sewage, and we'll be able to build on the land that we have owned for many, many years. I want to thank each of you for chatting with me and for listening to my phone messages as well, so, thank you very much. We are very supportive of this project, obviously.
Mr. Turner? Need to recognize you a minute.
I could just ask if the applicant's representatives consent to the staff recommended changes to the conditions, as they are reflected in the ordinance that's in your packet, the staff versions?
Okay, Mr. Coleman, you'll address that, I believe.
So there's, for the most part, the answer is, is for the most part, we think that the changes are actually sort of duplicative in terms of, forgive me while I flip here. So. No, I've got it. So, number two, we, as you can see, there's, we don't really see a distinction between the staff recommendation to break it up and the proposed number two. You know, we think number two, as is, is basically the same thing as what staff has requested, which is why we didn't make a change. In terms of the other two requests, in terms of, so it's a little confused, this slide is a little confusing. Number, so, in terms, the two that were other two ones where there was some request for change are actually in the text, not in the numbered offset items, but in the text. So one is, all garage doors will include decorative carriage hardware and windows. At this point, you know, certainly if, at this point, we have not offered that. That was something that staff had requested. We are going to be providing decorative carriage hardware, certainly, you know, our, you know, we don't think that that's a make or break issue, but certainly want to listen if council thinks otherwise. And then, on the offset, again, what we've provided is a group of townhouses, no more than two units without a horizontal offset of at least two feet. In our experience, that's all that's needed, because for the most part, builders don't build offset on the front and not on the back, so we think that that's sufficient. Staff's request for that additional language, we don't think is necessary, which is why we haven't offered it.
Hey, does that cover everything, Ms. Jones?
Yeah, so, just so council's clear, the applicant has not consented to in writing these proposals, so you cannot impose those conditions upon the applicant. However, you could vote to approve or deny the rezoning application.
And if there are concerns, certainly, we are, we are open, open to listen. We think that basically it's, as proposed, we think you're getting pretty much the same product.
That explanation change anything, or?
But staff recommended that you do it, and you didn't do it. That's not a good thing not to do, that's not. Staff made recommendations, and y'all didn't do them. That's a good way to get your, your application denied. This is your simple request, and say you said, well, they don't do the front and they'll do the back, you put it in writing, and you require, were asked to do it, and you didn't do it, so, anyway.
My comment is, if it is such an insignificant change, I don't know why you would. After your argument is that it's basically the same, then.
Okay, any other comment, suggestion?
If you, if, if the council would be willing, I'd like to have an owner, representative of the owner come up just to speak to this issue.
Attorney Coleman, can you take your?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'd like to have a representative owner come up and speak to this issue, if y'all would be willing to hear him out.
Okay, please come forward, state your name and address, please, sir.
Yes, sir, good evening. Chester Allen of 555 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. Thank you for your time this evening. I think just one clarification, there was a lot of back and forth. I think we have the best team in town, a little bit partial, but McKimmick Creed and Toby Coleman here, who certainly has done a lot of business in this town. And so, just the comment of, I mean, I know y'all know a lot happens before, comes before you, but there was a ton of back and forth about this, so this list went back maybe half a dozen times at least. And really, on the, the comment about the offsets, that's really so much more about site plan and construction docs as opposed to a zoning condition, so there is some major heartburning consternation over that, because to have zoning conditions and then impact the outcome, you know, and I think capturing the spirit of what was asked, that's, that's just problematic, because we're setting ourselves up for problems. If it was a make or break thing and saying, okay, we need carriage hardware and windows, is a pretty straightforward thing, right? You'll see a garage door's going to have windows, that's fine, and tonight, I would be okay with amending that language. But the other one is just, it gets into a whole other thing of a vertical, and again, we, this is a zoning meeting, not a site plan or CDs, and so it's just, it's just too much detail at this time.
Questions for Mr. Allen? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification, so are we going with the carriage hardware and windows, is that a yes or a no?
That is a yes.
That is a yes, I just want to make sure, okay.
And again, you know, in terms of the, the number two, all the sort of various mixes and no vinyl siding, again, that is a linguistic thing. If, you know, we think that that already exists, condition number two, as proposed, is the same as condition number two split up, we're not aware of any distinction there. I mean, I think there's one word difference in that whole paragraph, so.
The other change was adding rakes to the eve?
Rakes and eves? I mean, there's, I think there's some discomfort at the level of planning, but. Okay, just the change at the windows at this time, I think at this point, we're.
A question for Mr. Trezenberg, haven't we also, have Tom required vertical offsets as well?
We have. The reason I think that the horizontal has become more of an issue is, we saw this firsthand with Minglewood. When that came in, they originally showed them that way, but it was not incorporated into a written condition, and so the product changed, and we got a flat wall facing Aversborough Road with a flat roof line. The other thing I will say about the rakes and eves, I don't know how a rake affects your site plan, because honestly, it's an overhang and the building's already thirty feet apart, so there's no fire code issue, so that should not be, in my estimation, an issue either. We broke up number two because we don't like to have multiple issues in one condition, so it was primarily just to break it up, so that when we get to enforcement with our building permits review, they can check things off as they go, and there's not something that gets missed. I do feel strongly about the windows, and I will say this about the offset, to me, that was more of a clarification, because in the master plan, they are showing offsets, so I would still be holding them to some kind of offsets regardless. So that, if they're not planning on offsets, then they shouldn't show offsets.
Okay.
So to clarify, the Minglewood product showed it, but it was not in a condition, and then when it was built, it's just one flat surface.
They showed it in their elevations, we didn't have a footprint or anything at that time, it was just a block, so that's, yeah, at the end of the day, because it wasn't in a written condition, we couldn't, didn't have a leg to stand on for that.
Council Singleton, could I, would you mind if I address that as well?
No, right here.
So, one of the unique aspects of this, and I think one of the challenges that we've faced in this, is that we're not trying, I hope you know by this point that I am not one to be particularly obstinate, I, my, my goal is to help work with the town and work with developers to help find a way that, that makes sense for everybody. The issue here is this. This project started before the master plan, this tier-two review started, and so, we put in a bunch of zoning conditions, then we put in a master plan. The master plan, as, as Plank Director Trezenberg said, does have, does create some additional commitments that the town is going to do. What we've tried to do is say, is, is just say, look, this is what we're providing, both in the master plan and in the conditions, we think that those, those match up, I mean, I think they're pretty minor issues, but I think given what, you know, the discomfort that you're hearing from Mr. Allen is not a desire not to work with the town. The discomfort is this, we were very specific in, in what we were providing in the master plan and what we're providing in the conditions. Unfortunately, one of the things that happened as we got to this stage was this. We provided a set of proposed zoning conditions, and we provided a master plan, and that's what can be provided. The reason that town, the town council had to ask this question is, is that the proposed ordinance, for whatever reason, that was included in your packet, includes conditions as rewritten by staff. Put us in an extraordinary, so it's put us in an extraordinarily uncomfortable situation, and so, we appreciate any feedback you have for us, I wanted to give you that context just so you all could understand that we're not trying to be hard-headed here. I'm, you know, we're, we're trying to provide what we think is a good product, to the extent that council has significant concerns about this issue, ultimately, I will tell you that we want to get this approved, and these are, these are issues that we think can be resolved. If there is guidance, we crave that guidance, but we think that in this context, and especially given what Mr. Trezenberg has said, we think that most of these issues, you know, we've provided, addressed most of these issues either in the master plan or in the, or in the zoning conditions we've already provided. I apologize for that long-winded answer, but given the, the amount of concern about it, I wanted to address it very directly.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this to our next meeting, so that they can come to some reconciliation on the discrepancy, I think it's unclear, given the presentation of the conditions split out and not, and also maybe consult with the family on what they want. I think there's a shared opinion on what happened over at Minglewood, and we all look at it, and, well, I'll speak for myself, I don't like it. And I think it would be better if we have a consolidated, straightforward thing to vote on. I think that'd be helpful for everyone. That's my motion.
Okay, thank you, just before I ask for a second, I'm going to ask the attorney if she wants to offer any further comment or clarification on the matter.
So in bringing this point up, I just wanted to be clear that you did not have the ability to adopt the ordinance as written if the applicant did not consent to the conditions. If you wish to approve the project with the one change that they have consented to, you could do that, you'll just have to, in the motion, amend that language in the ordinance to go back to the applicant's proposal.
Okay.
Or you have the option of continuing the case, or, you know, voting to deny it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Those are basically your three options.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, counsel, there is a motion before you, you've heard that, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Further comment before we vote?
Just to clarify, Ms. Jones, if this had, it would be, had been voted on, the conditions that we would vote on based on that ordinance are not acceptable to them, because they didn't put them in so, like, so, we don't even have a force, what the council wants, we have what the staff recommended and the council wants, but if we approved it as it is, because they didn't consent to it, it wouldn't apply.
I'm not sure that this has been tested at this point, but yes, if you adopted condition, you don't have the ability to impose certain conditions on the applicant without their written consent.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Coleman, I'll hear from you again.
I can eliminate that question, we will consent to what the, what staff has proposed.
And just to be clear, we would need them to do that in writing, so they could either, you know, initial a copy of the ordinance that's in the packet tonight, since you have a representative of the owner, you know, sign that to indicate that they are consenting in writing.
Because I understand it, yeah, if that happens tonight, if the council wants to, to vote on that without understanding, then it can be accomplished this evening. But, before us is a motion to continue the manner, to sort through any of the inconsistencies or lack of misunderstanding, and to bring it back before this council, in essence, to continue it, so there. Counsel, you've heard the motion, and there may be a way to work through it here, it seems to me, but at any rate, the motion is to continue, I don't think you set a set date, did you, Mr.? Yeah?
They're willing to consent to the staff's recommendations, I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay. All right, and who seconded that, you would agree with that?
I'll second.
All right. Okay, so we're back then, potentially, to the motions, let me see, I'm not sure if we've heard from everybody yet, we've heard from the applicant and others, are there others here who wish to speak to this? Okay, hearing and seeing none. I believe a new motion is in order at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the town council accept the Planning Commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment requested with adopted land use plans detailed in section six of the staff report, and find the request inconsistent due to, due to its inconsistency with the 2018 Garner Forward Plan. Yet I also move the town council adopt ordinance number 20225107 approving rezoning CZMP 21-08 as the requested, as request is still reasonable and in the public interest, because it will likely, it will likely mix housing types in filled areas in harmony with adjoining older neighborhoods and refocus development on our centers, including downtown and North Garner.
Okay, Mr. Vance, thank you, motion made, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, motion properly made, seconded. Give you one last chance, counsel, before we vote, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm voting against it, because this is not a proper application of putting this product out there, and this is zoned I-2, but this could have been requested to downzone this for years, it's been zoned that for decades. We, we only have a small amount of commercially zoned property in Garner, and we talked at our retreat about protecting the commercially zoned property that's in Garner. We also talked about the small area plan, that at our last meeting, our last work session last week, we directed staff to move forward with getting, not applications, requests for, what's the word? People to do the project.
Oh, consultants.
Thank you. Thank you.
To, uh, do a small area.
Consultants for services to do this. So, uh, we haven't even done that. The, the, the picture that we're showing on here is a picture from the, from our older plan. That, that may not be what they come with, come back with. So you've got a small pocket of residential surrounded by a commercial and we're going to sit here and I've heard everyone up here before question why the Hunter's Mark was approved by the town council at the time. Being the one person who was on there, at the time, there was Goodmark Foods, Jones Sausage was a two-lane road, you sat in front of that. There was no White Oak, crossed the road in Raleigh, there wasn't a whole lot. And so who knew it would grow and develop as it has grown and developed? Now we're sitting here and we're going to pop residential right in the middle of something without the small area plan and knowing that it's still going to be commercial type development out there. And I've heard some of you say, why did you, why, who, why did the town council put it out there? Well, we, in hindsight's 2020, you wouldn't do that today, that big of a project. But it happened and you protect the residence of Hunter's Mark because that's where their homes are. And it, it just happened, but at 20, hindsight 2020, there's no residential across in the Raleigh Park. And you were further down the road a substantial way. So we're sitting here in a pop residential in the middle of it with the traffic issues that we have. And this would have, uh, uh, more autom-, more automobile traffic than truck traffic, obviously, but, uh, just not a good move. And we sat right at our retreat in February and said, we're going to protect our commercial zoning and we're going to, uh, move forward with the small area plan, this being one of the keys. So we definitely got the cart before the horse.
May I respond to that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In reference to the rezoning, the question was asked by myself in reference to Hunter's Mark and it being residential. And if you look at the, uh, the 11-plus acres there, it's surrounded by, for the most part, residential. Uh, so it, if, if you look at it from that aspect, you try to place in heavy industrial in that location, not knowing what it's going to be, it could be something that's in, not in harmony with the current residential location that, that is currently planned there. Uh, and this is more in harmony with residential because it's surrounded by residential, understanding that we, we are looking at future endeavors of, of, uh, what, where can we put industrial parks and how can we, uh, get our business versus residential, uh, percentages and more in line with our vision and goal. However, but this particular, uh, project, uh, is one that I believe is, is consistent with what's currently out there in that environment. And with the traffic concerns, uh, a traffic impact analysis was not necessary because of the limited, of the small amount of traffic that will be coming back, coming through that area, along with what was mentioned earlier pertaining to the traffic problems at that light, at, at, uh, at the intersection of Calberry, I think it is, the Calabar and Jones Sausage. We currently have a plan in place where we are going to improve Jones Sausage from where, where Amazon stopped it up to where it's going to end at, uh, at, at, um, at Old Garner Road with the intent of trying to improve that congestion in that area so it be a more of a free flow. So we, we currently have things in motion and this is currently, in my opinion, in harmony with the current, current existing situation. And the traffic is not going to be, I would say, a significant impact, uh, because it's something that would catch, it would be a traffic analysis if it's going to be a problem and if it's going to be a hindrance to the current, uh, intersection that the traffic will be going to. Also added, that we are currently looking at possibly improving, uh, Wilmington Road to connect with Crete Road. So there's going to have more, more access, not knowing exactly when those are going to happen, but yet still we are going through that thought process and when we go through our, our transportation plan, we can look at it even closer, uh, to see, okay, how is this going to affect traffic in that area? So there are plans in place and this one for right now, because of what has transpired in the past, have made it more conducive for residential, in my, in my opinion, than for heavy industrial.
Uh, it will be surrounded by a commercial development and the, the plan that's already shown, just a schematic from the Garner Forward Plan a few years back, showed R12 that's going to be rezoned to commercial. So it, we're, you're putting, again, I, we'll just have to agree to disagree on this, but this is going to come out, somebody's looking a few years ago and say, what in the heck were they thinking? This is, got it written all over.
Okay, I've given, uh, thank, thank you both. Um, other, other council members, we're still in the discussion process just before we vote, so, um, anybody else care to weigh in on thoughts, comments?
I just want to make sure that the motion reflects the inclusion of the staff recommendations. I don't know if I need to amend the motion since we have a couple of different documents in front of us.
Well, my understanding with the applicant consenting and willing to confirm that in writing, that the ordinance in your packet does incorporate those staff recommendations, but that the applicant has to consent in writing.
Mr. Barringer, were you wanting to say something? Okay. And Mr. Matthews, anything? Okay. Okay, council, um, we've heard from the applicant, the town, our attorney, and several of you. Motion that's properly before us is to, um, as made by Mr. Vance, is to, is to approve this. So I'm going to call for a vote at this time. If you favor the motion that is before you, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed to the motion, would you vote no?
No.
Okay. Motion is approved by, I believe, a vote of four to one? Okay. So, um, it is so ordered. And, Mr. Attorney, you and Mr. Coleman will get together on the further, uh, procedure that needs to take place, correct? Okay. Yeah, I said you and, oh, well, Mr. Coleman will get with you in regards to the, uh...
I believe Mr. Trezenberg handled that.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. Uh, okay, council, uh, let me see, okay. Are you ready to move to the next item? Mr. Bamford, you're still up, sir?
Mayor, members of council, uh, this is another conditional rezoning with the master plan. This is a tier two rezoning. The site is on West Garner Road. It is, uh, does involve, uh, several tracts of land. Acreage is around 9.36 acres. And, uh, this, this has written conditions offered as well as a master plan sketch attached. To summarize the request, this is to rezone from single-family residential 20 and multifamily 1 to multifamily 1 conditional district 248 for the development of up to 66 units as either single-family cluster, duplexes, townhomes, or condominiums. And, uh, density, um, would be approximately seven units per acre. This map shows the boundary of the project and rezoning site outlined in orange. The site has road frontage on West Garner Road. It's located between, uh, the intersections of West Garner and Jurgen and also the intersections of West Garner and Vandora Springs Road. It backs up to Weston, I believe Weston Ridge subdivision. Uh, Vandora West is located to the east here. Uh, this is the most recent subdivision that was rezoned and approved. Uh, there are quite a few commercial uses in the area. Angie's Restaurant is located, uh, one parcel over to the west, across, uh, West Garner Road on the west side. We do have several non-residential uses, uh, located near the intersection of Jurgen Road. Uh, we have some, uh, commercial retail uses near the intersection of West Garner and Vandora Springs Road. We also have some light industrial uses along Bobbit Drive, uh, directly, I guess, in this So, uh, since the public hearing, there have been several, uh, changes, um, and we're going to walk through those. Uh, since the February, um, so the first, uh, planning commission meeting was held on February the 14th and the commission did continue that till, I believe, uh, the meeting in March. Uh, so, so after the February, February 14th planning commission meeting, the applicant made several, uh, modifications to their request. Uh, first, the density was lowered to seven units, around seven units per acre. Uh, this was down from seven, 75 units max to 66 units max. Uh, there was one building, a building orientation change, which was, uh, faced, which faces a different direction. Uh, the apartment-style condo parking was removed. All units will have a driveway and a garage. Uh, the Curtis Drive connectivity was removed, uh, but a dashed line was inserted, which acknowledges the transportation plan that it could be made if required, and this is pending the policy discussions with council on the connectivity. As far as impacts to the, uh, town's long-range plan, uh, the future land use map, there was no change. It was still inconsistent. Uh, the long-range plan recommends a density between two and a half to five units per acre. So the drop in proposed density from eight to seven, uh, was still over that threshold. The transportation plan, uh, which was inconsistent, is now consistent, uh, because it does acknowledge the transportation plan. Uh, there was no change to the parks and greenways plan. Next few slides will go over the proposed, um, zoning conditions. Uh, the first, uh, set of conditions have to do with proposed uses and the applicant is proposing to restrict the range of MF1 uses to only the following: residential cluster, two-family dwellings, townhomes, and condominiums. Next, uh, each dwelling on the property shall contain a minimum of 1,500 heated square feet of gross floor area. Buildings shall have a maximum 40-foot height in three stories. No vinyl siding will be used on any of the unit exteriors. No more than 66 residential units will be constructed on the property. Townhouse or condominium group defined as a building containing multiple units shall include at least two of the following siding types of the front facade: board and batten, horizontal lap siding, and/or shake siding. Seven, the front facade of each townhouse and condominium unit will include the following treatments: a covered entry, at least three operable windows, and one entry door, at least one two-foot horizontal offset per every two units. Uh, I do have several conditions that are highlighted and those are new conditions that have been offered since the March planning commission meeting. So, so these are not in your staff reports, these are newly offered conditions. Eight, any townhouse or condominium group oriented so that the rear facade faces West Garner Road shall include at least two of the following siding types on the rear facade: board and batten, horizontal lap siding, and/or shake siding. Number nine, this is also a newly offered condition. Each townhouse or condominium unit oriented so that the rear facade faces West Garner Road will include the following treatments on the rear facade: A, at least one two-foot horizontal offset per every two units; B, at least one roofline articulation per every two units. All townhome and condominium units will have a minimum eight-inch roof overhang on the front and rear. Each units, each unit in each townhouse or condominium group will have a minimum of eight-inch roof overhang. Eleven, units with garage parking will provide a minimum garage size of 12 feet by 20 feet. Twelve, all buildings shall be located within 100 feet of the rear lot lines of the following properties. These are Wake County parcel PIN numbers and these are the lots on Villa Vista Trace that back up directly to the site. Thirteen, a proposed amenity of 500 square feet include a shelter, stationary tables, and seating will be provided. As I summarized previously, uh, these are the two new zoning conditions that have been offered since the March 14th planning commission. Over those, and those were the highlighted ones on the previous slide. So we're going to go... This is the, uh, this, uh, master plan has gone through at least three, um, revisions. There was one shown at the public hearing. There was one at the February 14th planning commission meeting and it was revised a third time and this is the most current one that was presented at the March 14th planning commission meeting. And I'll just, I'll start, um, on the right side and, and go around clockwise. Uh, the perimeter buffers are, are around, around the perimeter of the site shown in green vegetation. The one setback that is being offered, um, that means that any of the buildings constructed on site would have, uh, at least a 100-foot setback from these lots here on Villa Vista Trace. One, two, three, four. Those were identified by Wake County parcel PINs and the zoning conditions. Stormwater, um, control or devices would be located in the areas shown in blue on the master plan. This building here in the center, uh, directly, uh, west of the amenity area, that orientation changed. It was, um, I guess, perpen-, I'm, I'm sorry, um, parallel with West Garner Road and it was turned to be perpendicular with West Garner Road. So that building orienti-, uh, orientation has changed. Uh, the, the connection to Curtis Drive, uh, is not shown. However, there is, there are dashed lines here which acknowledge the transportation plan that this could be connected if required. Uh, going over to the left side, again, the perimeter buffers are shown here in green and these will meet the UDO requirements. The mail kiosk is located here and the proposed amenity area is located here. Apartment-style condo parking, which was, uh, shown at the public hearing in this area here, and also this area here, has been removed. All units will now have their own individual driveways and garages. Summarizing, um, the topics discussed at the first planning commission meeting on February the 14th. Uh, planning commission topics included proposed, you know, uh, questions about the proposed residential density. Uh, there were, um, questions about, um, you know, West Garner Road being a gate, a gateway into Garner. Other topics included character of the area, uh, the townhome orientation along West Garner Road, uh, comments about the, the streetscaping along West Garner Road, and also the connectivity to Villa Vista Trace. Public topics, uh, included, uh, comments about the urban forest, uh, which, um... Members of the public said was on the site and were of high value and require preservation. Uh, there, there was a comment that the request is inconsistent with the long-range plan and there were concerns about traffic, stormwater noise, uh, impacts to the neighborhood. Your, your staff report has a lot more detail, these are just, uh, summary bullet points. At the March 14th planning commission meeting, uh, I will summarize, uh, some of the topics discussed. Again, residential density was brought up. One comment that the proposal does not align with the area being a gateway and that the units, uh, townhome units should face West Garner Road. Uh, there was comments about the character of the area, uh, comments about the townhome orientation along West Garner Road. Uh, there was one comment, um, acknowledging that the applicants did offer extra buffering on the, uh, rear of the site. on the rear of the site, and there was also comments that the previous comprehensive plan in 2006, this was part of the mixed, I think, mixed-use activity center, did recommend a density of six to 10 units per acre in this area. There was, to deny the request, but that did fail. Public topics included, again, the urban forest that was noted to be on the site, that was of high value and required preservation. There was a comment that the revised lowered density was still inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and there were concerns about traffic, stormwater, noise, and other impacts to the During the Planning Commission meeting, after a failed vote of recommendation to deny, the commission did vote four to three in favor of adopting the following statement of consistency and recommending the project to the town council for approval. Although discussed, building orientation was not formally cited in the motion. This is the consistency statement. While this request to rezone 9.36 acres along the north side, northeast side of West Garner Road from single-family R-20 and multifamily I to a master plan multifamily I conditional District 248 is consistent with the town's transportation plan and Parks and Recreation Greenway Cultural Resources master plan. And while townhomes are a recommended use within the medium-density designation, the proposed density of 70 inches per acre is inconsistent with the future land use map's designation, which recommends a range between two and a half to five units per acre. If approved, this would require a land use map amendment to the future land use map from medium-density residential, which is two and a half to five units an acre, to high-density residential, which is not less than five units per acre. We will also note that a transportation plan amendment may be needed later, depending on the final connectivity policy determinations. Reasonableness. In addition to approving a statement regarding plan consistency, upon the advice of the Planning Commission, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Staff commentary. The original master plan showed a street connection from Curtis Drive to West Garner Road, which is recommended in the Garner Ford Transportation Plan. In response to comments from the public hearing, the applicant revised the plan to show an indirect access connection to West Garner Road by, through Weston Ridge Run and Villa Vista Trace. The option of connecting to Curtis Drive is also presented, and those are in the dashed lines on the master plan, so that preliminary subdivision planning may continue if approved and pending the outcome of policy discussions on connectivity. These are some staff observations in your deliberations on a reasonable case. Number one, dwelling units per acre have been lowered from eight to seven. The previous 2006 Comprehensive Growth Plan recommended up to 10 units an acre. Also of consideration is the suitability of single-family detached dwellings along a roadway with higher traffic volumes. Location of, of site along fixed route transit service, which benefits from more residents and destinations within walking distance. Proximity of nearby non-residential uses and zones. Those, again, those are near Jurgen Road and also Vandoor Springs Road and Bobbit Drive. Provision of housing options in the area, few apartment choices, and only avenue at White Oak for townhomes in North Garner. As of this writing, there's no commitment to have front-facing units along Garner Road as desired by the Planning Commission and staff. As of this writing, no commitment to the use of any masonry exterior finishes. Staff recommendation, as revised with the traffic circle, all garage-style units, lower density, and inclusion of connectivity options pending outcome policy discussion. Staff supports the resounding request as an, as a reasonable one and would recommend approval. Staff is supportive of a higher density, given the extra buffering, as well as the adjacency of West Garner Road as a major thoroughfare that does have traffic volumes over 10,000 vehicle trips per day, and also with the proximity of non-residential uses in the area. Staff would be more strongly supportive if units along West Garner Road had their fronts facing the roadway, as discussed by several members of the Planning Commission, who ultimately voted in favor of recommending approval. And as noted, noted in the consistency statement, this, approval of this request would require a long-range plan map amendment from medium-density residential to high-density residential to allow residential development over five units per acre. That concludes our presentation, and we'll be happy to answer questions. And the applicant does have a presentation as well.
Okay, council. Thank you, Mr. Bamford. Questions for Mr. Bamford before we hear from the applicant's presentation? Mr. Matthews, anything?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Singleton.
Yes, Mr. Bamford, I watched the Planning Commission meeting on this, and they went around and around, quite a bit of discussion, and just hired the front-facing units on Garner Road, made it pretty clear. Also, I'm, they, they showed, they had the condition for what they, between the siding, but as of this writing, there's no commitment to using any masonry exterior finishes, correct? That's what y'all stated, right? And there's no place for kids to play? Okay.
All right, I'll go this way. Start with Mr. Vance and work my way back. Anything?
Questions?
Okay. Ms. Behringer. Mr. Dalgard.
Help me understand, so, one of the specific use classes is residential cluster, and in my reading of the UDO, there are three different tiers of, there's a, two and three, and one is like one per acre, two is up to five, and three is five to 12. And then there's somewhere, as I mentioned, of a limit of six per acre, which would only be 57. So, was, was the residential cluster originally part of the request, and I just overlooked it, or is that?
It was part of the original request.
Okay. So, I must have missed that. So, and I guess reconcile the, the density, the tiers of that with what's proposed, and then we have this conceptual map that isn't sort of in alignment at all with a residential cluster type of zoning, which require, which has zero lot lines and village-style housing. So, I guess, and all this is sort of new. How do we reconcile the request for residential cluster zoning with this conceptual map that they've submitted that doesn't really align with residential cluster? So, if we were to approve it, would they then be able to come back with a totally different conceptual plan? And help me understand the density.
Sure. So, if they were to decide to do a residential cluster, they would just do a plan modification? I will point to Article 6.3. That, that talks about the residential cluster option. So, under MF1, that would allow single-family homes on 5,000-square-foot lots. Now, that is in exchange for extra perimeter buffering and some other standards. So, so residential cluster is single-family. It just allows you to do smaller lots in exchange for perimeter buffers. Are the three tiers you were talking about, was it the R-40, the R-15, and the MF1,
Okay. So, it would just change the setbacks and?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
But the density on that is six per acre, right? They went that route, or am I misreading?
They, they have a zoning condition that limits the, the total number of units to 66. I believe under MF1 cluster, that would be about, I think about eight units an acre, if I did my math. That's gross acreage. They would still have to factor in open space, so their actual net density would, would be less than eight units an acre.
See if I can find it. My other question or concern that I'll put out from the very beginning is that we don't have this policy about connectivity that we talked about, newer neighborhoods to older neighborhoods. I've seen there've been some modifications. My kind of overriding concern is that precedent becomes policy over policy being policy, and we've run into this before Spring Drive, Grove Mountain Timber, Cloverdale. And without having these guidelines in place, we end up spending a lot of time on council. You spend a lot of time on staff, and it wastes a lot of time for developers because there's sort of inconsistent guidance by the time it gets to council. So, I'm, I'm very hesitant about approving any sort of a development with a, any kind of connection when we don't have guidelines, because we, I'm afraid we'd set a precedent for something else where they didn't say, well, you approve this connection to this old neighborhood over here that didn't have sidewalks. So, there are a lot of reservations about that piece of this right now. Now, there's been a lot of back and forth on it, but I'm very concerned about the connectivity, the lack of a policy to inform everyone.
Ms. Behringer.
Regarding the units facing Garner Road not being front-facing, what is the rationale for not making it front-facing?
So, I would let the, I would let the applicant speak to that. We went back and forth with that several times with them. I think they see it more as a, as a marketing issue right now. I think our perspective is, is that as much demand as there is right now, that really hold water. And we just, at the end of the day, we agreed with Planning Commission that we felt that that would be better to embrace Garner Road rather than turn our backs to it. You can do it either way, and I, we provided examples of what that could look like. I think they have potentially tried to address it if they're facing inwards to give something more than just what our ordinance would require for landscaping along West Garner Road, so that it's not just street trees and then looking into backyards. But that is kind of the option. You either landscape it, like they do in places in Western Wake, where the neighborhoods are, you know, turned in, and you have huge landscaping buffers, or you turn them and you, and you face the street and give, give the front yard. And it's not that everyone has to have a sidewalk out to the front, but as long as there's one or two, you can fence it off. There's different things that we feel could be done. So, I think it's just been a difference of opinion right now, but I would defer to them to give you the why.
Regarding connectivity, am I understanding that no sidewalks are, are proposed for the Garner Road side of this development?
There, there is.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes. Garner Road is one of our bicycle, one of our, one of our designated bicycle corridors for the future, so there is enough pavement that's going down for future bike lanes. Of course, you can't, you have to wait to do that, a good amount of it together, but there is sidewalks, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just, just to make sure I understand the connection optional if required. So, as this project, just for that particular item, if this project moves forward, there's not going to be a connectivity unless this council requires one, or we change something? If you could clarify that for me.
Sure. So, between the applicant and staff, the, the applicant still wanted to try to move this forward in some fashion. We are actively working to draft that for, for discussion with the, with the Public Works Committee. We're not quite ready yet. So, staff fell back on the policy of that Villa Vista currently is a non-conformity, and that has to be fixed regardless if there's going to be development. So, that connection was shown and treated somehow to make sure that there's a turnaround. They propose, the applicant proposed the mini-traffic circle regardless, so that, that is in there and would also work if the Curtis Drive connection would ultimately meet the connection policy. They could easily incorporate it if there's some kind of alternative where we don't, where the policy would require, not require the road to connect, but we would still want a sidewalk connection so that kids from neighborhood to neighborhood could walk back and forth. We could do that, or if the policy says it just doesn't need to be connected at all, it would have that as well. So, that was the intent of kind of deferring that for now, but knowing that we'll be having that discussion within the next 30 days, and by the time they get to preliminary set plan review, we'll have that resolved, and staff can then evaluate their plans accordingly.
Okay. Mr. Matthews.
I can start on this.
Okay.
Mr. Dalgard brought up an interesting point. I just want to make sure I understood that connectivity deal, so we're prepared either way down the road, I guess is a good way to put it. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Singleton.
The applicant's going to make a presentation, correct? Okay. I reckon I'll wait till then and ask about the, the front-facing and the lack of open space for kids playing.
Okay. I believe, follow-up, Mr. Dalgard, okay?
Quick, quick follow-up on the, the change in the entrances. There was initially two, and then it was changed to one. One, the rationale behind that, and then also with the reduction in units, is it required to have the two connections so they could, actually did not even have the back connectivity if they didn't want it? I mean, you'd probably love all that connectivity. So, the, with the reduc, the reduction in size created the need for only one entrance, is that right? Or was that just a happenstance?
Yeah. Actually, the one, the, the second entrance off of West Garter ended up going away mostly because of the proximity to Jurgen Road and the need to make the left.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to hear the presentation from the applicant at this point? Mr. Bamford? Okay?
Members of council, Toby Coleman, 150 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh, here on behalf of the petitioner Concept Date. I've got a presentation, I think, I've, you know, this is sort of gives you the highlights, which I think staff has done a good job of, of sort of outlining. I want to go ahead and address a few of the questions that came up from, from council. Sounds like y'all sort of appreciate the change from street parking to garages and driveways, reduction in density. In terms of the facing West Garner Road, I want to get to that first, because that sounded like one of the big questions from, from some of the members of council. This master plan doesn't necessarily say it will happen or it won't happen. It just, it leaves the question open. The concern from Concept Date is frankly that it's not clear that there is a market for townhomes facing West Garner Road. The reason being, and Jason Meadows is here with Concept Date, he can answer this probably more detailed, but generally where you see townhomes with front-facing onto, onto public streets like that, it's usually where you have street parking. So, there's a little bit more of a, an ability to, for people to park. an ability to, for people to park or otherwise amenitize a street. Because this is a thoroughfare that's ultimately going to be larger and busier, the thought process was that people would, that it's highly likely that in this current market, that people would prefer to have a backyard rather than having their stoop out onto West Garner. As you may know, Vandora West, which is the subdivision that is connected, would be connected via Curtis Drive if there were a connection, has its backs to West Garner Road. You know, for better or for worse, it's sort of the current market. And so that was the thought process behind that. We did want to, the reason we, as Jeff noted, the reason that we presented some of these additional conditions was to try to address some of the concerns that we heard from the planning commission, because it wasn't, you know, some of it was, some folks, I think, did want stoops, but others just wanted to make sure that there was an attractive, interactive feel from the, from these townhomes that were facing West Garner. We wanted to, by putting those zoning conditions in, our goal was to try to avoid some of the prior sins, I guess I'll say, of some of the other developments where, you know, you have a very flat, flat-facing and single-product back. And, you know, you have the nice fronts but not the nice backs. And so happy to address that more. In terms of, you know, I will just note, and I think you all know this, I think all of you all are familiar with this site. This is a site that, you know, I sort of was looking actually again today, this is a site sort of sandwiched between residential and commercial. It is on, currently what sits are five homes that, you know, despite their prime location haven't, that have been there since, I think the youngest one is a 1954 vintage. These are old, not really historic homes. And so this would be, and, you know, I can't say definitively why this area hasn't developed for single-family homes like some of the others, but for those of you who heard the planning commission meeting, you know, what I would note is, is that, you know, probably the proximity to commercial and in particularly industrial makes this part of West Garner a bit of a transition zone. It does make it a great opportunity for townhomes in particular because it has a central location, and as David noted, it is on the R twenty, the Route twenty Go Raleigh line, the Garner line. We are in conversations with Go Raleigh. Currently, there's a stop sort of in the Angie's parking lot, not particularly accessible. We've started having conversations to put a transit stop, relocate it towards this area here. It's fifteen to twenty minutes to downtown, so would be a really good opportunity. It does provide significant green space. It does not have, what we've provided, Council Singleton is an amenity area, so that area just north of the lavender townhomes and to the right of the red townhomes is a 500-square-foot amenity area with benches, et cetera. That is provided. And then, and then I did want to, so with that circle, I put in that circle there just to sort of highlight what has been discussed, and I want to give a little background here. So we came originally to you all with a plan that was going to have both Villa Vista Trace connecting to the north, Curtis Drive connecting to the east. We heard significant concerns both from neighbors and from you about those connections. Ultimately, staff determined that the UDO required that we connect Villa Vista Trace to the north because, as Jeff said, it is a non-conforming, currently a non-conforming stub street. Under the current UDO, Curtis Drive does not have to be connected. We are aware, very aware, that I think, I want to say two months ago, it might have been one month, Council Dellinger noted that there is an issue in terms of consistency of policy between connecting old subdivisions with new subdivisions. We wanted to be sensitive to that, and we appreciate, Council Dellinger, your concern about that. Here's the issue. Concept Eight put this, put these properties under contract back in, in May of last year. It has to close in May. So in other words, it needs to decide whether it's going to move forward or not on these properties in the next month or so. That makes it critical to determine whether or not it can get this rezoning. So while we appreciate the desire of council to set up consistent policy that can, you all can apply consistently and predictably, we were sort of stuck between a rock and a hard place frankly. And that is why, as Council Matthew said, we went to staff and proposed what we thought was a, what we hoped you will agree is a creative and elegant solution, which was to say, we appreciate the council is working through this process and is trying to make a decision on whether or not these connections should be made. We are agnostic, right? We don't, we don't care, you know, frankly, what Concept Eight's position is, is, you know, if the town said you have to connect Curtis Drive, we would connect it. We heard from council that there are concerns about cut-through traffic. We heard from neighbors that there's concerns about connecting it. And so we, so what Concept Eight did was say, we proposed getting rid of that connection because we don't absolutely have to have it. To the extent that council comes back, comes up with a new policy, and under that new policy, that connection is required, the way that, as Jeff said, it will be provided in the site plan. It's, you know, the default is, is that it's not provided because we think that's, we heard from council and from the public that that was sort of where everybody was leaning, but we wanted to provide council with sufficient time and ability to make that decision without hampering, completely hampering this project. So that's why we proposed that condition. Just looking to see if there's anything else. I may not have missed anything else. There's one thing I do want to note, if you go to the next slide. So this is going to be pretty obvious to you all. I think it just speaks to what we all know. Anybody who's seen that video from the NNO that I think came out about a month, month and a half ago, where there was like seventy people lined up to see the one $300,000 house available in Raleigh, can appreciate this. This is from MLS. This is a graph showing the median home price in the last year in Garner. And what it shows is a 37% increase for single-family home median home price. And that home now sells in Garner for, median home sells for $400,000. I was actually looking at Vandora West, and those homes a couple of years ago were selling in the $300,000 range. There's one in 2021 that I could find, and it sold for well over $400,000. So this area is certainly seeing that. One of the great things about Garner is that you all are hometown community, and I think part of what that means is inclusivity, that you don't have the economic walls up in the same way that some communities around Wake County that have median incomes of $100,000, like Holly Springs, Apex, Cary, are great communities, but they have a much higher median income, and that creates some limitations on who can live there and who can be part of the community. Garner's median income reflects, I think, you all's values in inclusivity, in about $66,000. Well, with the median house price rising like it is, the median income is going up in Garner, but it's not going up at the same rate. And so what these townhomes provide is an alternative housing form that provides an altern, you know, something that is, that comes in at a little bit cheaper. Again, this is not, you know, per se affordable housing, certainly isn't subsidized housing. You know, what, if Concept Eight can't say in two years what the pricing would be because we're all dealing with inflation and other construction costs, but if these homes were opening right now, they'd be about $300,000, $350,000, right? So incredibly expensive. I appreciate, I see you shaking your head, Council Dellinger, but, but it is unfortunately, you know, more affordable than what we are seeing with home prices. And I think that, you know, I think what we all know is reflected in that graph, which is that, you know, we have to look at other options for the median family. So with that, we are available for questions.
Yeah, well, I know Mr. Singleton had indicated he wanted to ask his question to the applicant, or you still want to do that, Mr. Singleton?
Mr. Coleman touched on the front-facing in regards to the, to the market, which is interesting that we got front-facing on the project that was approved previously, and you see what the front-facing of those face when you've been down there. So that's just very interesting, what they're going to face. Couple of issues I have, it's noted on staff, I got it on here, here we go. The front-facing units, no commitment to use the major exterior products, and I appreciate you showing me the amenity area, 500 square feet, but 500 square feet is 10 by 50 or 20 by 25. I'm talking about a half acre for kids to play. I base this off two things. One, people telling me on some subdivisions we approved down in, off New Bethel Church Road, mainly single-family homes, there's no place for kids to play. Basic more on the fact that right beside my office off Pool Drive here in Garner, there's 200 townhomes where kids have no place to play. There's a vacant lot across from my office, it's about a half acre, and I've got pictures of them on my phone, the kids playing football, soccer, baseball, using tennis ball, adults out there with them, count them, there were 27 kids out there one day playing. There's no place else for them to play. South Garner Park is close by, but you don't have a 10-year-old, you shouldn't have a 10-year-old going that far, or group of 10-year-olds. So the fact that people have kids in here, where they going to play? Now, yes, they could walk over to, one of the parks is a long, long way away. It's just a concern. And the median area, 500 square feet, is not very big. I'm just sorry. I mean, there's basically no amenity area, but anyway, that's my concern. I'm not in favor of the project for numerous reasons, but that's just one of several.
Okay.
Go on.
Mr. Matthews.
We look at that area, and I was driving through it this weekend, one of my favorite restaurants is down that way, and I think everybody knows where that's at, and that whole corridor, as I was talking to my wife, I said, she says, this where it's, and I said, this is where it's looking at going in here, and as you mentioned, those old houses and all that, it needs work in there to upgrade that neighborhood and get rid of all those old houses, and there's even more on further down and across the road, those mobile homes, that's another story within itself. But I, I saw we got, and the frontage on those ones facing the road, we had the same issue with that other group. So we've got some things we need to work out here. I'm not against the project, I just, we just need to fix some things in it to make it workable. I think we, one of my questions, that connectivity, and I think we've got that one resolved, but there are some other questions here about the front-facing units there. And you're right about the cost of place in Garner. I've had that conversation this weekend and last week with so many people, and the issues are everywhere right now as far as buying houses. My neighbor's selling his, and man, you think it's the white house, but that's what he wants for it, and he's probably going to get that much out of it. But this is a, you do make a good point. Condominiums are an opportunity for people to get in housing right now, and there's a tremendous housing shortage, and I don't think anybody has an answer for it because of just cost of building and the cost of housing now. So condominiums is a, is a good answer because we do have a housing shortage in Wake County. So I know I'm rambling to some extent, but I like the project, we just got to fix some things, I guess is the best way to put it. So if we can come to some agreement with the issues that concern everybody, we can see where it's at.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Thanks for letting me ramble there, Mr. Mayor.
I want to get around to everybody. I'll go to Ms. Behringer next.
I like the, I like the plan. Yeah, we do have some issues. I'd rather see those units on Garner Road being front-facing rather than rear-facing. But as Mr. Matthews says, that area has been in need of help, serious help for so very long, and this is an opportunity to make that happen. So my question is, how do we work through these problems without causing, you know, just developer in terms of his commitments as well? I'd like to see those units be front-facing.
Okay, Mr. Dill, your turn.
Question's one for our attorney on what weight and gravity we are supposed to give to a developer's financial situation. Is that relevant to our decision by statute?
Right now, you're making a decision on rezoning, so it should be focused on both the uses and to some extent, because this is conditional rezoning, the conditions that have been proposed.
So I appreciate that, but it is not part of our decision-making process. The other is I still have an overarching concern on this connectivity, and there's a, is some indifference to it. I see that, but I'd like it to be kind of conclusive with this project so that we know moving forward, because we continue to have these issues and concerns. And another thing with the presentation of data and information, 200, you say 250 for one of these townhomes. There's nothing in Garner, a townhome, new construction townhome for 350. So I just want it to be clear when people, when developed people come to, before council with stats and information, that it's very accurate, because...
Could you, could you just repeat what number you thought I said?
350.
350, yeah, three, 350.
You find a townhome, new construction townhome in Garner right now, so forget when this gets built in a year, can you find a new construction townhome in Garner for 350?
I mean, I believe, I don't have the MLS numbers on me, but I believe that that is consistent with the current MLS number, the median numbers, but I'll certainly, we can certainly check that and get that information to you.
I just want to be clear, because I think sometimes numbers get used loosely and they change. And also kind of, I mean, it's so personal around categorizing Garner in a particular way. I find my last comment for now.
Mr. Vance.
I'm Mr. Dill.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Coleman, I thank you very much. Is anyone else part of this presentation? Okay, is there anyone here who wishes to speak to the issue that's, okay, if you will? Ms. Clerk, were these the folks that had signed up to speak, I believe, or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor Marshburn, members of the town council. My name is David Schmidt, and I live at 120 Villa Vista Trace in Garner. During the town council meeting on January 18th, which considered the proposed development, council members Singleton and Matthews expressed concerns about traffic, parking, and density. Mayor Marshburn requested the planning commission evaluate the development for consistency with a comprehensive plan. During the planning commission meeting on February 14th, members requested the developer revise the proposal to achieve a lower density in order to be consistent with a comprehensive plan. The design the developer presented at the next planning commission meeting on March 14th was still not consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the developer did not address many of the concerns of the planning commission members. This is reflected in the fact that three of the seven planning commission members voted not to approve the plan for future consideration. Developers stated that they are now asking to build 66 units rather than 75. Reduction in density from 75 to 66 units is only a reduction of nine units, which is not significant and would not result in any reduction in traffic or parking problems or preservation of green space and the existing character of the area. In addition, 66 units is still many more than the maximum of 47 units that would be consistent with a comprehensive plan. Nearby residents have expressed concerns about further increased traffic through surrounding neighborhoods and its effect on the safety of children and older residents. In addition, 66 units with a potential for 100 to 200 cars will make the traffic on West Garner Road much heavier than it already is. There are only a fixed number of railway crossing points from West Garner to Route 70. Heavier traffic on West Garner will result in backups, increased accidents, and barriers to emergency response. Although the stubouts on Curtis Drive and Villa Vista Trace need to be addressed, this could be accomplished by connecting Curtis Drive with Villa Vista Trace or by using proper cul-de-sacs without the multiple problems occasioned by building the proposed development. cul-de-sacs, without the multiple problems occasioned by building the proposed development. While the comprehensive plan may not be regulatory, the stated purpose of the plan is to increase property values through association with green spaces by maintaining community image and providing, by providing community infrastructure. Garner's Choose Garner website provides the comprehensive plan map as a resource for those who are interested in relocating to or doing business in Garner. If the plan is automatically amended, whenever it becomes inconvenient, it is clearly not a document that the town of Garner intends to follow, and so has no value. The same could be said of zoning. Zoning regulations do not exist in a vacuum. People buy and sell homes on the assumption that their investment in the community will not be zoned out from under them. During the last town council meeting, a new resident to Garner who would be affected by the proposed development expressed concern over exactly this. In addition, a number of my neighbors are considering moving due to this very issue. Prospective businesses and would-be residents who these businesses would bring will be hesitant to relocate to Garner if they know that the comprehensive plan and zoning regulations are unreliable. Lastly, during the planning commission meeting on March 14th, the developer claimed that they are building affordable housing and that the median price of a home in Garner is $400,000. Redfin, a real estate brokerage firm that operates nationwide, states that the median price of a single-family home in Garner is $335,000, and the median price of a townhome is $320,000. During the last planning commission meeting, the developer revealed plans to ask $350,000 per unit. This does not meet the criteria of affordability relative to the cost of other housing. As elected members of the town council, I ask you to adhere to the Garner Comprehensive Forward Plan and the zoning regulations already in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Was your viewpoint represented by anybody else who was planning to speak? If so, usually we, we let that one speaker represent the others, but I'll hear from you, ma'am, if you will.
Sorry. Take your time. I know you're having a long night tonight.
We wanna hear from everybody.
I'll try to go quickly.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ann Rivers, 120 Villa Vista Trace. During the initial town council meeting and the last two planning commission meetings addressing this rezoning request, I expressed concerns about the developer's plans to remove the land's old growth forest and the high value it provides to our community. I provide you with a petition of 100 signatures, 63 from Garner and surrounding communities. So I'm not only speaking for myself tonight here, and you have that petition, I gave you a copy of that. I noted that according to North Carolina's Forest Action Plan of 2020, the specific urban forest planned for removal is of high priority in their map survey to protect. During the initial town council meeting, council member Dillinger stated the current Garner tree cover requirement is only 12% to 14%, and he would prefer the developer stick closer to the new development plan, which is 20%. He also wanted to see much more innovation towards tree preservation. He asked the developer to give as much consideration towards the environment as they do the development. During the planning commission meetings, members also expressed their interest in preserving this tree canopy. Unfortunately, in the revised plan presented by the developer, there was no more effort to preserve the tree canopy. They give 100-foot buffer, but there's still only a 35-foot tree buffer here, so, and the 25-foot buffer. Those are all required in the UDO, and that's what they're sticking to. They're not doing anything more with that, as well as the 12% to 14% tree. So they adhered to only what was required for buffers and tree cover requirements. There was not a whole lot of innovation otherwise. To emphasize Garner's comprehensive plans, two important goals in keeping Garner's character are to promote open spaces and natural features such as major trees and woodlands, and to encourage the use of conservation developments to preserve natural features and green spaces. For our neighborhood, this is one of the last remaining urban forests left in the area. It is an old growth forest, which takes a very long time to become that way. This urban forest helps manage stormwater and control and prevent the pollutants that come from the surrounding industrial and roadway activities, keeping pollutants out of our yards, our gardens, and freshwater streams. It helps prevent negative health outcomes like asthma by cleaning the air. Helps reduce stress by providing views of nature and greenery, as well as buffer the traffic, industrial, and railway noises. And helps provide a habitat for the species our neighbors enjoy. One reason used to justify tree removal during previous meetings was that if the developer did not utilize the land, it would be sold and developed anyways. There is an alternative, and this is where I ask a little bit of creative thought for you all. I have been inquiring with a new, a few nonprofit organizations, including Triangle Land Conservancies, Tree for the Triangle, and the Conservation Fund. And with what I would include for my own savings, along with the potential funding from these or other organizations, there may be an opportunity to purchase the land to preserve this urban forest for Garner. Making this very important decision tonight, I hope all of you will consider the high value this green space and urban forest provides for Garner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivers. Okay. All right, we've been going on for a while. I know councilors anxious probably to take a break, but we're gonna finish this before we do. So was there anyone else here who, who had planned to speak to this issue? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Council, I'll give each of you an opportunity to make any other comments prior to a motion on this matter. Start with Mr. Vance, maybe? Anything? Okay, Mr. Dillinger.
If we could, recess, I think, I need to process and think about, there's a lot of conditions and things that have come up. I'd like a little time to think before we vote.
Okay, let me finish hearing from the council members. I hear your point of view. Ms. Behringer, do you come in here on this side?
We can table it. We don't have the front-facing issue settled, we don't have the masonry exterior settled. I mean, there's several issues here, you know, unless we're gonna deny it. I mean, then that's, which is fine with me, but I'm saying it. I mean, the option is, and I'm sorry that it's gonna close in May, but that's not my problem. You know, I'm sorry, that's not our problem, that's y'all's problem. You know, it's not the deal, we didn't make that deal, so we can always be tabled. But there's too many issues. I mean, I've sit here, and I think at the planning commission, and they went, they denied it 3/4, then approved it 4/3, but then there were one of these other things done, but someone voted to approve it. I'm like, either you're for it or you're not. You can't go halfway and say, well, and do this, but we want the front fronting, but we didn't make them do it. I mean, either you're gonna make them do it, or you're not gonna make them do it. And if they don't agree to the condition, then you deny. Simple.
Okay, Mr. Matthews.
Sounds like we've got some things we've gotta work through here before we, we do any kind of vote on this. There's a lot of things still left on the table here that, questions unanswered, and we need to have these resolved, so when we make a vote, it's a good vote. And it's not fair to, in my opinion, to, I don't wanna drag this thing out, especially for the folks who's trying to develop it. I understand that business is business. However, if we're gonna have a good vote, that we can support it, we need to get these issues, we owe it to ourselves, and to get all these things cleared up, so...
Okay, I've heard a suggestion from one council member to just take a recess and have a chance to kind of regroup and reprocess and then come back, I suppose, and take a vote. I'm also hearing a suggestion that we perhaps table the matter, or at least continue it to a future time.
I'll throw that motion out. A move that we table this matter until the second meeting this month, which will be April the 19th.
19th, I believe it is.
And issues to be discussed are front-facing, masonry exterior finishes, and other issues that have been raised tonight amongst the council, and also concerns of staff.
Second. Okay, motion probably made and seconded. Any final discussion otherwise? If you're ready to vote, I'll call for the question, then. All in favor of the motion to continue? Until the next meeting, I believe, because that was it?
Yeah.
Anything else we need to include in that, Ms. Attorney? Okay. All right, if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, vote no. Mr. Coleman, that's the decision of the council for now. Hopefully, by this delay and some additional time, we can come back to this issue and perhaps have, I'm not saying a changed perspective, but at least you heard some of the concerns mentioned in terms of front-facing and some of the other issues we'd like to see addressed, if you would. Okay, so it's so ordered that the motion carries. Thank you for your time. I'm going to call a recess for now, and we'll come back to the other item on here as quickly as possible. It's about 22 of 10. I'll suggest that we come back at, at 9:50, which is 10 minutes of 10, I suppose, so about a 12-minute break, if you will. Declare us in recess at this time. Okay. We'll be ready to start in just a few seconds. Okay. Okay, I'll declare that the council is back in session from recess, and we will now move to complete our regular agenda, and we'll move, I believe it's to item four, am I right, Mr. Banford? Motion probably made and seconded. Any final discussion otherwise? If you're ready to vote, I'll call for the question. Then, all in favor of the motion to continue?
I believe that's-
Excuse me, that's Mr. Beck's item. We got one more for you, right? Until the next meeting, I believe, because that was it? I'm sorry, go right ahead. Anything else we need to include in that, Ms. Attorney? Okay.
All right, we got one more rezoning case tonight.
All right, if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
This is a conditional rezoning CZ SB twenty-one dash zero five.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, vote no.
And the SB and the case number means there is a subdivision plan attached with the rezoning.
Mr. Coleman, that's the decision of the council for now. Hopefully, by this delay and some additional time, we can come back to this issue and perhaps
So this site's located on Catty Road, and that's off of Highway four oh one
have, I'm not saying a changed perspective, but at least you heard some of the concerns mentioned
down near the McCullers area under ten-ten road.
in terms of front-facing and some of the other issues we'd like to see addressed, if you would.
Site's about nine point five-four acres in size.
Okay, so it's so ordered that the motion carries.
And this is a, this is a commercial subdivision plan with written conditions.
Thank you for your time. I'm going to call a recess for now, and we'll come back to the other item on here as quickly as possible.
And to summarize the request, this is to rezone nine point five-four acres
It's about twenty-two of ten.
from multifamily conditional District two twenty-four
I'll suggest that we come back at nine fifty, which is ten minutes of ten, I suppose.
to service business conditional use District two fifty-one
So about a twelve-minute break, if you will. Declare a recess at this time.
for the creation of three commercial lots. And this request also includes a list of restricted uses. So any of those uses could theoretically be developed on any one of those three commercial lots. The site is outlined in orange here on this vicinity map. It's on the south side of Catty Road. It does have road frontage on both Catty and Highway four oh one. It's just north of the McCullers Development, and also directly across the street from the Rand Village subdivision, which includes Costco. I think Chick-fil-A's being developed over there, and some other businesses are coming in to develop on those out parcels. Directly north of the rezoning site is an apartment project that was rezoned and approved that is currently under construction. And the new emergency services facility will be located directly east of the rezoning site on this parcel here. This map shows the existing zoning in this area of Garner. This property is zoned multifamily two conditional use, and this was rezoned not too long ago. I believe the case is in your zoning history table in your staff report. This is near the intersection of ten-ten and four oh one, so this is a high-intense activity center with commercial uses on Garner's side, and then Fuquay Varina's side is south of ten-ten road in this area here. So there is split jurisdiction in this area. But this is emerging as an activity center with NC five forty proposed to go just south of this intersection, north of Wake Tech Community College. Part of this request, the applicant is proposed, is proposing to restrict the range of service business uses only to the following. We have uses under community service, uses under daycare facilities, educational facilities and services, healthcare, entertainment, office, overnight accommodations. Uses under retail, sales, and service. Restaurants. Self-service storage, vehicle sales and service. This would, this would just be general repair and vehicle service limited, so auto sales would not be a permissible use. And then lastly, flex space uses are proposed to be permissible on this three-lot subdivision. We'll also note that this is in the Highway four oh one overlay district, and that does restrict uses with outdoor storage and high-intense uses. So what's proposed on this list does not conflict with the overlay district standards. So in addition to the proposed uses, the applicant is proposing some additional standards that would apply to development on this site. Number two, architectural design. All buildings throughout the subdivision will use masonry consistent with one or both of two masonry brick product colors in order to provide architectural uniformity. B, building elevations facing a public right-of-way or customer parking shall have no more than thirty-five percent APHIS materials. C, vinyl siding shall be prohibited on all building elevations. Number three, public street lighting. All uses within the development shall use similar light poles and light fixtures as public street lighting as applicable. B, all site lighting for parking and private internal drive shall be installed on round black poles. And then number four, public street landscaping. Subject to the approval of the technical review committee, there will be at least one shrub, one canopy tree, and one understory tree identified for common use throughout the subdivision. And I'll just make a note that individual site plans will have to come in for any of those lots, and that would go through a site plan review process. So this request is to allow a range of uses, and then individual site plans will come in to staff and go through the site plan review as each of those lots develop. So just quickly going over just some general information. Again, the site's nine point five-four acres. Under service business, minimum lot size is six thousand square feet. And these are the setbacks, thirty-five feet in the front. Side setbacks will vary. And then the corner side setback is thirty-five feet, and also the rear setback will vary too. This is the proposed three-lot subdivision. Apartment development, again, is located here. That's under construction. And lots one and two will have frontage on four oh one. Lot three will just have frontage on Catty Road. And there is going to be proposed an internal access drive here in addition to an access off of four oh one. Stormwater, proposed stormwater device or facility location would be right in this area here. Summarizing the planning commission, there was not as much discussion with this case. There was a question about the BMP and whether an underground detention system could be used. And there was a question about Catty Road and four oh one, if it was going to be a write-in, write-out only. In the, I believe the answer was, was yes to that question. In consistency, the planning commission voted seven to zero to adopt the consistency statement and to recommend approval of the conditional rezoning to the town council. This is the consistency statement. This request to rezone, this is a typo here with the, did twice, to, this request to rezone nine point five-four acres from multifamily two conditional District two twenty-four to service business conditional District two fifty-one is consistent with Garner Four's transportation plan, the comprehensive land use plan map, and also the Parks, Recreation, Greenways, and Cultural Resources Master Plan. In reasonableness, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Recommendation, staff supports case CZ SB twenty-one dash zero five as presented and reflected in section three of this report, and recommends town council approval of the planning commission's statement of consistency outlined in section six of this report, and further recommends approval of the zoning amendment request as a reasonable one. We have a note here to see the motion worksheet in your staff report. And I will make note of the last paragraph here. Staff has, staff has discussed opportunities for town welcome signage in this vicinity. Is, base is constrained along the four oh one frontage. However, the applicant has offered to contribute some funds and may also explore the opportunity of having a joint signage in conjunction with another use out there. They, they're unable to commit to that, but they are willing to commit to contributing funds of, to help offset the cost of a welcome to Garner sign. That. Let Jeff make some comments.
So I was just talking with the applicant before the meeting. Some time ago, they had been in discussions with the, the apartment complex to, to consider this kind of idea. They're willing to go back to the apartment complex if the council would find that they would like to pursue this. At the time, staff said that we weren't really sure. We could probably work out the logistics of shared signage, but whether or not that was something that you all would be interested in doing. So there is a rendering from before as to what that might look like. Otherwise, we do still have the easement site that we procured from the owners at the Food Lion Shopping Center. That site, if you'll recall, does have, we knew there was going to be some grading involved. What we didn't know is that there was going to be some relocation of some underground electrical that is not, it's not tremendous, but it's not cheap either for just a welcome sign. So we ran into that, so we've kind of held off with doing anything further. But like David said, the applicant is willing to contribute some funds towards that to kind of try to help offset some of those costs, if that's the direction you all would like to go in, or they have, they have expressed that they will at least go back and talk to the apartment folks if you are interested in that option as well.
Right down the road there at ten-ten and Lake Wheeler Road. Town of Fuquay has a sign like that with the development immediately under it there. So that's first, that's the first time I'd seen one of those signs like, just like this one, yes, sir. At ten-ten and Old Stage right there. I mean, ten-ten and Lake Wheeler, let me correct.
You sign the mayor of Fuquay. Turn it around.
There you go.
Yeah, that wasn't a serious comment. All right, let's see, David, are you finished at this point?
You're finished, and the applicant is here as well.
Okay. Let's see if council has any questions for you, sir. So council, start here in the middle this time. Ms. Barringer, did I start with you last time? Okay, yeah.
No questions, I think.
Okay. Ms. Taylor.
I'm all for signage down there, whatever we need to do. People need to, need to know they're in Garner and not Fuquay down there as soon as possible. The money we spend is good branding. People need to know that Garner exists down there. People don't really know. My one question for this particular project, and it kind of pertains, I think, to a lot of other projects up four oh one. The stormwater is designed for one, ten, and twenty-five-year storm events, but a lot of this development north of ten-ten is in critical watershed areas. And I'm curious, have the other projects we've approved up that way, do they only go up to twenty-five-year events? And is this, seems like something we really need to push in, in the watershed on that, in that area? Because we're prone to hundred-year flood events more than every other hundred years.
I don't know if I've got anybody. Chris is sick this evening, and I don't know if Leah is.
I'm here, Jeff.
She's, she's here. Leah, can you speak to that?
Sure. So right now, our UDO requires detention of the one, ten, and twenty-five-year storms everywhere within the town. And then there's a stipulation that we can require up to the one-hundred-year storm. I think the way it's written, it's left basically up to the town engineer's discretion. To this point, we have required that on a couple areas of town, especially like the areas that drain to Buck Branch, and the areas that drain, like going through the Greenbrier neighborhood and that vicinity. Basically, the places that we have a lot of historic flooding complaints along those creeks. So those are the watersheds that we've identified and have required detention of the hundred-year storm. So in this area, we have not, because it is in the Lake Benson watershed, they are required to provide a primary treatment device that provides TSS removal as well. So there's a higher water quality standard, but we have not yet added a higher water quantity standard for this area. But I think it's something that's up to our discretion if we need to revisit that.
Thank you. All right. And I think maybe not for this particular one, but I think it's something as we do this UDO rewrite, we need to consider heavily. Particularly when you're looking at uses like this, that you have a gas station, you've got lots of cars and runoff in, in this area as well. Accounting then, especially when you're talking about hundred-year type of flood events, you're talking about runoff that actually does come from other adjoining properties. So I know it's responsible for its own, but you have these situations where these mass flood events occur, and water doesn't go where you think it's going to go. So I think we need to look at that with the UDO rewrite we have coming. I think, especially- I think especially for larger developments and commercial in the, kind of everything north of 1010, we need to probably look at that. But considering there's not, sort of been a precedent for that along these other developments, I wouldn't necessarily make it a condition of this, but I'd like us to look at that going forward.
Okay, yeah, I think that's the thing we can look at.
Mr. Vance, any comments? Okay. Mr. Singleton.
I agree with my colleagues in regards to the sign. It's, if we have an issue removing utilities, I know that can be expensive and can be time-consuming to get them moved. So if the other council members agree with the signage, I think, I'm glad we can finally get some signage done because you've been working on that for a long time, Jeff, years.
Mr. Matthews, comments? Okay. David, if you're finished, I believe we will hear from the applicant or representative. Thank you for your patience, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Nate Bueller, speaking on behalf of Cambridge Properties, 831 East Morehead Street, Charlotte, North Carolina. Just wanted to touch briefly, we're not going to provide an additional presentation at this time beyond what we shared with you at the previous council meeting and the planning commission meeting, but just wanted to touch briefly on some comments that were made regarding the proposed uses. We've been very fortunate to be able to work in Garner over the last number of years and work with you all to develop in this area, this node of 1010 and 401. And as you all have seen, there's been a tremendous explosion in residential growth in the area. And what we've always done throughout our history is identify trends and community-oriented opportunities to build and develop uses that are in line with what's happening in the markets that we're working in. And when we saw this enormous residential growth, there were a couple opportunities that I spoke to in the previous meetings that I just wanted to re-highlight. One of which is the development of a northbound convenience store use on lot one that you see there before you. That site plan is actually currently in review with staff. There is no other northbound convenience store north of the new 540 interchange. And with the 2,000-plus new residential units in the area and the traffic changes, we thought it was a great opportunity to bring that to the community. And the other, I know it's been discussed a bit, was, is a fully enclosed self-storage facility that's proposed on lot three. That'll be climate-controlled, fully enclosed facility that actually, from the current trip generation under the MF designation that we had originally proposed, will reduce traffic, will have no impact on schools, will have an extremely low impact on sanitary sewer usage. And will be architecturally cohesive with the balance of the Rand Village project. So just wanted to speak to those couple uses with you all this evening as you make your decision and just share a couple comments on that. I did also generally want to make a note regarding the watershed that we are limited to 75% max impervious on this property per the watershed. Appreciate your time available to answer any other questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Over here, Mr. Matthews. I'll start down there with him and work my way back around. Mr. Vance, anything? Delinger and Ms. Behringer. Okay. Thank you very much. You having to drive back to Charlotte tonight? God bless you. Okay. All right, council, let me see, was there anything else over here? I don't see anybody else in the audience who might speak to this. I'm sure it's not Mr. Beck who's waiting patiently for another hearing. Okay. All right, so council, I believe we're ready for a motion, are we not?
Let me ask you just a quick question. In regards to the sign, there's nothing different in a motion to incorporate that, that's going to be included? What's going to happen, correct?
I mean, they have offered the 4,000 no matter what. So I mean, we can add that in if we need to.
Add it in, or it's understood that that's, they're going to do that.
We're prepared to offer the 4,000 and also are very glad to reengage with the multifamily development partner regarding their current plans and where they are in their process regarding the opportunity for the shared sign design that we commissioned last fall. So can fully commit to the contribution at this time and will also reengage with them regarding the opportunity for shared signage with the hope that they're not too far along in that process to make that feasible.
I wouldn't hurt you to include it in the motion, would it, Mr. Attorney?
Similar to previous case, we'll need him to put that in writing, that he consents to that and incorporate it into the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in section six of the staff report as her own for the move the town council adopt ordinance 2022-5109 approving rezoning CCSB 2105 as the request is reasonable in the public interest because it will likely, I incur, did I add it earlier? Encourage commercial development in appropriate compatible areas where growth is occurring and that the developer will work with town staff in regards to the options that have been discussed for either a joint signage with the apartment company or the contributing funds in the amount of $4,000 to contribute to a welcome to Garner sign in the area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, heard several people, Mr. Vance and/or Ms. Behringer. Okay, I'm supposing there's no need for further discussion. Not hearing any, I will ask you to vote. If you approve the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And there is none. So it is so ordered, the motion is approved. Thank you, sir, for your patience. You happened to get last on the agenda today, so maybe we can move you up next time. Mr. Beck, I believe we're ready for you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Have an item for you tonight, which I think will be brief. We are bringing the proposed audit contract for the fiscal year 21-22 audit. We would propose that we use Malden and Jenkins as our audit firm once again. Last year at this time, we brought a proposal from them for a three-year, five-year extension. And council wished to proceed with the five-year extension, which locked in some favorable pricing for us. So this contract that is proposed tonight is consistent with that proposal they presented last year. It does not contain a fee increase for this coming audit. And we would ask your consideration to approve that contract tonight.
And I believe you just cited, the cost is $31,000, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, council, you've heard from Mr. Beck. Any questions, comments for him? All right, here.
Question about the, I know, I'm the one that wants to go too. So the language in it includes anything related to ARP and any other associated funds? I know there was some changes to the last one that we had to make, but those changes incorporated into this?
So this proposal includes one single audit included in the price, which we know will have to be used for the POW bill funding we receive every year. So if we did have to have another single audit for ARP, they would have to come back with a contract amendment. I don't think that's going to be the case because that's based on your spending, not the money you received. So I don't believe we're going to be subject to that this year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dellinger, okay. All right, you have the information before you, I believe, to make a proper motion, so I'll entertain that at this time.
I move to approve the contract with Malden and Jenkins to perform the F22 audit.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Ms. Behringer. Assuming there's no further discussion, if you're ready to vote, all in favor of the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And there is none. Okay, thank you, Mr. Beck, for your patience. Seemed like you were last in some other meeting, but I have to move you up somewhere along the way.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you, okay, appreciate it. Are there any committee reports at this time? Okay. By the way, I will be in touch with one or two of you. I'd mentioned before that the town has taken over the Stevens Service Award. And I want at least one other council member working with me on that. And we have some other members outside the council. So I'll be in touch with some of you. If that's something you have a strong interest in, just give me a call or email. Since there are no other committee reports, so we'll hear from the manager.
Yes, Mayor, town council, you have the Garner info in the back of your packet. And then just wanted to mention some events that are coming up. The spring extravaganza at Lake Benson on April 9th. I think it starts at 10, but I think the first egg hunt starts at 10:30. And then also, just a reminder that the live shows are back at the GPAC. You have the town players. Our community theater partners are putting on a production of the comedy, The Savannah Sipping Society, on April 15 and 16, and on April 22nd and 23rd. You can find the information on the garnerperformingartscenter.com website. And then later this month, April 29th, jazz trumpeter Willie Bradley will be at the GPAC at 8 o'clock. And you can find those details at the same garnerperformingartscenter.com website.
And I'm personally glad to see the town players swing back into action. We've missed them for some time, so that's good. Any questions for the manager, council? All right, hearing none, then attorney report.
Just briefly, the Garner Economic Development Corporation, GEDC, met last week. They're prepared to go forward with the property exchange. The Tharrington Road town property for the Caddy Road parcel to be used for the fire station. So notice will be published this week on the town website and then that can come back to you at your April 19th meeting for approval. And then I just want to let you know that this is the month of training for me. I'll be in all-day training on Monday, the 7th, well, sorry, Thursday, the 7th, Monday, the 11th, and then Thursday, the 21st. So I won't be in the office those days.
I can't make fun of those days because the March Madness is already done, so I can't make fun of it.
That's right. Can't hear from Mr. Singleton.
I don't schedule these things.
It's done.
She didn't say if she could be contacted by phone, but don't bug her if you don't have to. Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Jones. All right, council reports, I'll start sort of in the middle. I'll start with Mr. Singleton.
I just wanted, I texted Mr. Matthews and complimented him for the work he and the Veterans Committee did. Wonderful job. Saturday was a great day in Garner. I mean, it was several days, I was there Saturday for about three hours. And so the tour we took and the presentation and it's on Channel 5, you worked base, did a great job. So the work that committee did, the work Public Works did, police, Parks and Rec, Rick, the
Half volunteers.
So many people, all the volunteers, wonderful. It was a really great day and the work Tim Stevens did, thanked him again. The countless hours, it's a wonderful event to see the emotion it affected with some people, men and women, for I'm assuming a family member or someone maybe they served with was really incredible. So it was a great event. I had one, somebody at church yesterday told me, because they go at the park every day, walk and said how much, they enjoyed walking by that every day. They didn't get up, they got off the path and walked on the grass in front of it, back and forth. They changed their walk and just so they could walk at the wall and stare at it. So had a big impact. Thanks to all the ones that did, all the people that did the work on it.
Okay. Ms. Behringer, I'll go to you next.
I would echo Mr. Singleton's remarks. It was just absolutely amazing. Not words to describe the whole process and what everybody contributed to it and what it meant. And especially meaningful for me was that I was able to find one of my high school classmates' name on the wall. So that brought a little bit of closure, if you want to call it that. It was just real special to me. Couple of other things, the, talking about signs, the All-America City sign on Highway 401 South coming, well, it's coming into Garner is badly faded. And I wondered if we have a plan for replacing those signs. Some of the others may be as well, but it's really, really looks bad. Okay, and I had an email, I suppose all council members did, from someone opposed to the town home complex on West Garner Road. And they noted that there is an illegal gambling facility on Garner Road out there. Does anybody know anything about that?
The sweepstakes place across the main Jesus. I don't know.
The lights are not on, there's nothing.
They outlawed them. I think they outlawed them, didn't they, recently?
So too.
No, it's just
A back-and-forth issue for some time.
They're not, it's, I'm having stories with them and some took them out, but the outlaw was specifically to one company and one group and one type of machine. Yeah. They got a, yeah.
I was very concerned.
Yes.
Okay, let me see, which way, did I get to you yet?
Just ditto's what everybody said on the wall and it was great. And I know Tim with the walls and they liked to come back to Garner. They were just so impressed by how everybody's come together and made things happen. Anytime there's an issue, somebody dealt with it just like that. And so he was headed out to Arkansas, so I told him, good luck and welcome back.
Mr. Dellinger.
Just echoing everything that's been said about the wall. It ended up being a very Garner community event. And so it was, it was the right place to have it, I think. And it was, got to hear some good, well, not good stories, but stories from people. And it was, one gentleman, he had come back up from Florida because he saw the wall was going to be here just to see his friend's name on there. And he'd been to DC before and had not had the, it was too much for him to go to the wall when he was in DC. So he was able to do it here. So I'm sure there were hundreds and thousands of other stories like that over the weekend, but it was very one you contributed time, it was great, so.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Vance?
Yes, I'll just echo what has been said in reference to the wall. I say great work by all and thank you very much, Councilman Matthews, for your hard work in there. And it was a touching event. I saw my uncle's name up there and was able to get a sketch of it. And it was just a touching event. And another thing I'd like to say in reference to activities in Garner, had the opportunity to attend the Bling, the Bling Gala that was sponsored by the Midday Rotary. That's a great event. And they support the Garner Backpack Buddies program and provide scholarships for Garner-area students. It was a great, positive event. And good job.
Thank you, sir. And so the mayor will be brief. And I will echo what you said. Probably the most shocked lady in the place, John, was when somebody called out her name as a volunteer. I think she was the only one there, but at any rate, that was, that was nice. It was, it was a good event. And yes, to all of you, and I want to thank, well, the people sitting in front of me and all the town staff who participated, the town really showed up, the town staff for this. And of course, a lot of volunteers throughout our town. And I think it just showed off the spirit of civic-mindedness and patriotism and the other adjectives you might want to use to describe our town. And for me, it was especially a privilege to, you know, to meet these people who travel with the wall and come to know them, Tim, I've forgotten his last name, and just several others, Herb, who's from Minnesota, and different ones. I'm amazed at, you know, the work they do and as they travel. So it's always neat to meet folks from other areas, I think. But I echo, yeah, what's been said here. I think it was good for the community. And the weather, by and large, was cooperative, sure enough. So just one other thing, I had just opened this, I think all of you received the little green envelope here. Just to let you know, I did send a letter over to the teacher and she sent me a very nice note back and said she copied the letter and showed it to all the kids. And they were pretty excited that we were going to do this. So I'm going to get with Katie Lockhart when I get back. She's my contact, I think, just to kind of make sure we follow through. I think we decided to step up and maybe become part of the leader circle in this thing with the number of actions we'll take. I don't want them to feel like we just kind of threw it at them. I mean, I want them to follow up on that and anything I can help with on that, I want to do that. Thank you all for that as well. With that, I believe we've covered all the reports. Anybody else I need to hear from, either one of the assistant managers, Ms. Miller or?
No update to see me.
Okay, I think she's ready to go home. Mr. Hodges, okay, all right. All right, council, if you're ready, entertain a motion for a gentleman. Probably made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, and it's so ordered. Thank you all so very much.